Okay, I'd like to open this version of the County Board of Planning and Board Meeting, or City Board Monthly Meeting, in the first order of business. It is the Post-it Agenda, I believe Mansour, we're still waiting for information, so I don't need that they will be here tonight, we have to deal with that public hearing. And also, well, that's not something I know for sure is going to be different. Have you all had a chance to review the October 21st minutes? Could I motion to approve? Second? Could I motion to accept Jim's meeting notes? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Very good. Have you had a chance to look over the proposed planning board schedule for our regular meetings for 2020?
Yes.
Any questions, or...
I'd like to cut that back there.
Yeah, you and the rest of us. Wishful thinking, you're afraid. Does I have a motion to approve the proposed meeting schedule for next year?
I approve, even though I disagree.
Can I have a second? All in favor? Very good. We've got a few minutes before our first... Oh, yes. Yeah, at the Town Board Meeting next Monday night, the 25th, the zoning review committee today met and went through a matrix of issues dealing with short-term rentals, and we came up with a number of recommendations to the Town Board. They want to present that to the public explicitly. It's not a public hearing, they do not have a law written up yet. It's just to inform the public where they are right now on this issue, what they're looking at. And it's going to be on the 25th, they will be discussing it. As I say, it's not a public hearing, but if you have comments, concerns, interest about it, you should please feel free to inform, you know, send something to the Town Board. The Town Clerk would take it, and it'll all be taken into consideration. When they finally do have a draft ordinance, at that time, it will be announced, and there will be public hearings added as well. And I think the Town Supervisor's draft of data, this might be like a six-month process to get this from draft ordinance to an adopted law. It's going to be a process, they want to hear from you. It's an issue that's raised a lot of concern in the community for a lot of different reasons. So we want to make sure we get this right, rather than have something that's not going to function properly for our community. Does anyone else have any objections?
Solar law amendments?
Oh, yes. That's a cool, it's a good point. Thank you, Melody. The historic preservation law was adopted by the Town Board, which is to set up an historic archaeological review committee similar to the Conservation Advisory Board, to advise the Town Board, the Planning Board, other town groups, authorities, on issues dealing with historic structures in the town, archaeology in the town, things of that sort. So that we're making decisions on different applications. So we have the benefit of information about a number of the different aspects of those properties that come before us that we wouldn't ordinarily be aware of. As we all know, Rydick's is a very historic community, and great deal has gone on here in the last 400-ish years, or whatever it's been. So I know that they will be looking for candidates to steer around this committee. I think if anyone has an interest, I think you will probably contact the Town Clerk's office, and they can tell you exactly what the qualification, what they're looking for, and what they see as the responsibilities of this committee, how it will function. And I think hopefully it will be very helpful to us in terms of making decisions, and hopefully we'll put her man out, so perhaps she'll help advise us on certain issues that we certainly not expert on, and that we'll use to help. And we still have two minutes.
The solar law amendment?
Yes. Thank you, Eric. That's why you guys are all here. We have seven members, so we can cover all the cases. The Town is looking at a resolution to amend the solar energy law dealing with the screening of rooftop commercial solar farms, or solar power plants. We just got it today, the Town Board, it referred to us for a due, I haven't had the chance to read it, but it is available once they get to the Town Clerk's office. I don't know if they have it up on the Town Red Sector. But it is available, you should, you know, if you're interested in this issue, you should certainly feel free to look at it. I believe they've also set a Town Public Hearing for it on the 25th of November, which is a week from tonight. I don't know that they will be closing the public hearing at that time. They have to give a planning board, it's 30 days to comment on it, and obviously we're not going to do it tonight since we haven't had a chance to read it. But if you're interested in this issue, it will be a public hearing Monday night, the 25th, on this particular issue. Oh, I think it's close enough to our time. Our first public hearing tonight is Judy Dolberg, 1500 Hill Road, cycling special use permit, and group garage accessory dwelling structure.
Michael, I would like to...
Let the record show that Erin is recusing herself, and is joining the public. Okay, who does want to come up and present?
Hi, good evening, my name is Megan Sidelous, I'm the architect for Judy Dolberg. I work for Moncullin Handtapping. And she had approached us to change the use on, she has five garages on her property, to take two of those garages, one is a two-car, one is a one-car, and move them into an apartment, an accessory apartment, because her sister is very ill, and she would like to bring her to this area to look after her. There is a house on her property, but there is a young girl. She's about 10?
11.
11. And she figured this would be very taxing on the younger, to be part of this process. So that's the purpose of what is happening. We're not building anything outside of the envelope of what's carved there. We're not changing anything except replacing garage doors with solid walls and a door, maybe a window or something, which I have submitted. Other than that, there won't be any impact on the exterior. And interior, I have submitted the plan to show that there won't have, a one-bedroom residence that will be moved from the main building and installed in the garage. Just to separate the two sets of families that are there.
Is the opinion good from the Conservation Advisory Board? Okay. And that is, I know that Melody and I did a site visit for this. Would you like me to go? Okay. We went up to look at the property to see exactly what was proposed. We took a look at it, we realized another question and issue is the garage itself is built by a previous owner, and the bathroom and whatnot is put in by a previous owner. And apparently the Health Department have no record of that. So I know that I've been in contact, and I know that the applicant has been in contact with Dave Pearson at the Health Department, who's after what the Health Department requires to consider approving this accessory dwelling in this particular building. And I believe that the applicant has hired Jim Ross, who's a local engineer, to respond to the questions that Dave Pearson has asked about the adequacy of the system, where it is, does it function, and how does it function. And I believe that's still in process, you've probably not heard that from Jim Ross yet.
I have not, I tried, but I have not heard from him.
Okay, so you're waiting for that?
But we have done the discovery part, where we had an excavator, and we uncovered to see what's there. And there's actually a 250 tank there, which is sufficient for four bedrooms.
Okay. And then, of course, the other issue is the leach field itself.
Right. Five ladders of 50 feet, which we are in communication with Dave Pearson to see what he requires, or recommends, or has an issue with. But as far as the septic system itself is definitely adequate and more.
Okay, we'll be waiting for confirmation after Dave Pearson has, just to be able to move this forward. Another discussion that we're looking at, at the building itself, I know they, before the ZBA, were area variants, because of some dimensional issue with the property itself. The building was put there, I think it was under three acre zones still there. And so at that time, it was approved under the, prior to 2000 man zoning law. Now the 2000 man zoning law has other requirements. And so, once again, we took the ZBA Act, obviously the Planning Board can have it forward, with considering approval resolution for this. And looking at this structure myself, I must admit I don't find it unsightly. I think that turning the garage doors into solid walls with windows would probably make it a little more of a residential structure than a garage, which it is right now. It seems that screening could be placed in the front of it, if that were required. I personally did not see any problems with the building, we went through it, we wanted the upstairs, which has a studio area, with a full bathroom up there as well. I mean, the Health Department is aware of that as well, I take that into consideration also. That's my understanding from this comparison. So personally, from my own view of this, I do not see a problem with it myself. That was my feel looking at it. Do you know, I do have a few minutes left.
Well, we're aware of the fact that, you know, there are questions outstanding regarding the adequacy of the systems that are there, and that you've taken steps both with Tim and Dave to address this law. And so we're not going to close the public hearing, or make any determination on it tonight. Michael and I did spend some time out in the road, trying to see the sidelines from the adjacent property owners, and what the visual impacts might be. And as Michael said, there's no proposed change except for the moving out of a garage door, and the replacement of that with regular doors. So there's very little aesthetic change to the exterior. One might even argue that removing the garage doors is an improvement. I know that there are questions that have been raised about how the existing second floor has been used. And your assertion is that it's used as a studio and not as a residence. We did talk at length about the possibilities of how that could be misused, and so I, you know, I don't know what the answer to that is now. But I certainly know that there are concerns about that, as to how many actual living spaces around the property. And we know that you're removing one bedroom from the house, and that's what your trade-off is in the new one. But I think the second floor is something that there are questions about. I think it can be addressed, but I think it's fair to say that those are on the table.
Any questions from members of the Planning Board for the applicant? You may leave now, I don't want to interrupt the public. What I'll ask you to do is identify yourself, and come up and speak at the microphone, so that we can make sure we have a good video recording of you, and all the records and everything.
Thank you, members of the Planning Board and Chairman Trimble. My name is Chris Green, and I live at 11 Haggard Hill Road, which is adjacent to 15 Haggard Hill Road. My family and I, my wife Susan and I bought that property 10 years ago. 26 acres, and we bought it from Miss Harris. We paid $525,000 for the property, and we put about that much or more in the property since we've been there, in improvements. We have horses, miniature donkeys, occasional chicken, dogs, cats. It's a farm. And my two youngest daughters have spent their teenage years on that farm. They're now on their own, but my youngest daughter stays with us occasionally. Our next-door neighbors at 11 were Glenn and Diane Hobson, who've lived there for the 10 years that we were there at the beginning, until they sold the property to Miss Dolberg and her friend, Miss DeCunha, who are making the current application in March. We met them shortly after they moved in, and Miss DeCunha's daughter as well, who's 11 years old, I believe, or 12. And Miss DeCunha, excuse me, Miss Dolberg told my wife that it was her intention that Miss DeCunha would live in the house, and that she was going to stay in the apartment, in the garage. That is, Miss Dolberg, that she had a hot plate, that she thought that that would be sufficient. There was no mention at the time of her sister, who's now ill. I just want to make it clear that I empathize with Miss Dolberg and her sister's illness. My wife Susan, who couldn't be here tonight because of illness, got a cancer diagnosis herself in 2006. And in 2015, her cancer metastasized. And today, she has advanced-stage IV metastatic breast cancer of a small cell variety. She has a permanent port through which she gets four daily chemo treatments every three weeks at Vassar, at the Dyson Cancer Center. She used to do all the work on the farm, and ride our horses. But now she's unable to come out in public like this, or ambulate in the house. She has been hospitalized three times through the emergency room at Vassar in the last four weeks. And the last time, last week, she had a pulmonary embolism, which was blood clot in the lung. And I honestly was afraid that she was going to die. But now she has to be on blood thinners for the rest of her life. And so, I'm familiar with cancer, my family's familiar with it, and I had a great deal of empathy from Miss Dolberg's sister. I want to say that both of my daughters have lived in close proximity to their mother in the same house throughout this entire experience, the 10-year, and it's not affected them. They're healthy, happy, young people. But the issue here is really not empathy, but whether there should be two three-bedroom houses on a one-and-a-half acre lot, which I think will be the ultimate result if the application is approved, and whether the septic system will support that. Our septic system in our house was pre-coded, just like the septic system at 15. And three years ago, the septic tank failed, we had to have it replaced. And in the process of replacing it, the contractor did a poor job of using fill around the septic tank, and it fouled the well, because the well is only 25 feet from the septic tank. I don't know how close the well is to the septic tank that is on the 15 Haggard Hill property, but we had to move our well all the way down in the front of our property to get it away from the septic system, which we ultimately had to upgrade when we expanded our house and added one bedroom and one bath. We had to put in a huge leach field, and went way out into our paddock in the back of the house in order to certify Mr. Pearson. And I'm not sure there's room for that at 15 Haggard Hill Road. I'm not really concerned about four people living in the two houses. What I'm really concerned about is what happens if there is a change? What happens if the current owners decide to sell to someone else? What will those new buyers perceive the property to be? I think they'll perceive it to be two houses that are each three bedrooms on a one-and-a-half acre lot. And then you're going to have possibly five to 10 people from two different families, or perhaps renters, living in this very small lot, which is not what we barged for when we bought our property. We were living next to two people in one house, not two houses occupied by two families. So that's my perspective overall. As you know, I transmitted a letter this morning to the Planning Board, I hope you all got it, that was drafted by a group of people that live on the road, some of whom are here tonight, who have concerns, as I do, about this. And since this morning, an additional resident, or two additional residents have signed that letter, Miss Teresa Claire and Mr. Kevin Monahan, who live at 21 Haggard Hill Road. So I'd like to hand that up if I could.
Give me the direction right down there.
Your question, yes, yeah. Okay. The letter itself hasn't changed, it's just a few more people have signed it.
Did you want to read the letter into the record?
I'm happy to read the letter into the record if you'd like me to.
Entirely, we have it, and it is in the record, if you wish to read it for certain point.
No, I don't think it's necessary for me to read the entire record, since you do have it in the record. The one thing I would like to close with, though, Mr. Trimble, is in the zoning board of appeals file, there is an email from Chris Hedges, who I take it is the Secretary of the Zoning Board, or she is?
She is.
Yeah. And this email is to the members of the ZBA. It's dated August, no, it's not dated, September 11. And it says, "Good afternoon," I'm just reading in part, "the PB, the Planning Board, Gretchen and Michael have asked me to ask the Board if we can expedite an application quicker than our usual three-month process. Please find attached the determination letter." I do not have an application at this time. Michael feels that two, number three and four of the four variants may not be required. Michael, I take it is you, Chairman Trimble. He's going to talk with the zoning administrator, she's out of the office until Monday. And I think that this letter indicates, as your statements previously indicate, that you have made a decision in favor of this application, before you heard public comment.
Uh, no, I haven't. The question that I had was, and I think at the time Michelle was aware, that we do grandfather different applications now that are within existing structures, or within existing setbacks, and definitely beyond that. Last year, we grandfathered, so that I thought a couple of the variants being requested were no longer required because of that change in them to our zoning law.
Right, okay. Well, still, notwithstanding that, I believe, based upon my limited understanding of the way the Board and the Planning Board operate, which admittedly is very limited, that you have prejudged this case.
I have not.
And I would ask that you recuse yourself from determining the case, based upon my belief that you have prejudged it.
Well, it's my judgment that I haven't. The reason I asked to expedite is I read the conditions under which these variants are being looked at were insignificant, and I was hoping that they could expedite either to approve or disapprove, so that the applicant would know exactly where they stood. The Planning Board would not be able to take any action until they had gotten through the ZBA process.
But I don't think approval or disapproval should occur before public comment, in any event.
I agree, and it won't.
Okay. Well, that's really all I have, so thank you.
Thank you, and I wish your wife the very best.
Thank you.
It's a tough situation.
I'm Gary Lockman, who lives at 20 Haggard Hill Road, more or less across the street from the Dolberg property. I want to focus on three main points in my comments. One and three are pretty brief, two is a bit more extended. First, I want to emphasize the drastic nature of the variances required to construct an accessory dwelling on the Dolberg property. It has 30% of the required acreage, and less than 40% of the required frontage. This is not in the category of a 10-foot setback variance. This is huge. If the law says you need five acres and 400 feet of frontage, but the ZBA and Planning Board says it's okay with an acre and a half and 150 feet, it makes you wonder why we bother with the zoning law in the first place. There has to be a limit somewhere. And I believe that whatever limit this is, this one is over. Plus, the property has already received significant concessions from the Town in the form of front-wise setback and location variances granted to the detached garage. The exception is currently being sought out of the top of exceptions that have been granted in the past. That's a lot of exceptions for one property. Second, in viewing the tapes of the initial ZBA and Planning Board presentations, it was not entirely clear to me how many bedrooms the applicant claimed will be on the premises if this accessory dwelling is constructed. In the house, the real estate ad in Zillow says that there are two-plus bedrooms. In addition, it says that there is a studio with full bath on the second floor of the barn, which appears in the accompanying photograph to be used as a bedroom. Parenthetically, as far as I can tell, although the Board is now aware of it, in the initial presentations between the ZBA, the existence of what is essentially a guest cottage on the second floor of the barn was never mentioned. And the existing conditions on the second floor were never included in any of the documentation that was submitted with the application. Close parenthesis. In addition, the applicant shows at least one new bedroom to be constructed in the proposed accessory dwelling. That's a total of four plus. And I got the impression that the applicant said, as she said again tonight, that after the accessory dwelling is built, there will be two bedrooms. One in the house, and one in the garage. This is less than what exists now. Implausible, but it becomes even less plausible when it's compared to the number of bathrooms. Two full baths in the garage, and two and a half in the house? Four and a half bathrooms for two bedrooms? What happened to the upstairs bedroom in the house? Was this the one that was converted to a playroom for the teenage daughter? A playroom with a walk-in closet and full bath, by the way? Where will the daughter sleep? In the same room with her mother? A little strange now, but in two years, a 13, 14-year-old teenager? Unthinkable. The applicant and a seriously ill sister sleeping in the same room? I'm not sure I believe that either. Why are such implausible explanations being offered to keep the number of bedrooms to two? I believe it has to do with the septic system. It appears that septic requirements are geared to the number of bedrooms, and the property card says there are two bedrooms. They're both shown as being in the main house. The bedroom in the garage is not listed anywhere on the property card. If there's no increase in bedrooms, upgrading the septic system could be a non-issue. But if the system has to be upgraded, it becomes a huge issue, as I will explain in a moment. So the applicant has a strong incentive to present the project in such a way that upgrades are avoided at all costs. Hence, two bedrooms, however implausible that seems. The Board of Health has already informed the applicant and the Town that an engineering review of the septic system must be conducted. This review and its assumptions are highly relevant to how this application is viewed by both the Planning Board and the ZBA. Now, I've got a bunch of maps here, and if you could just take one and pass it on. Pass it on. Under current Department of Health code, no element of a septic system, including the expansion field, can lie within 200 feet of any well, including wells of neighbors. Now, the first page on that group of maps lays out the three properties in question. The Green property to the west, the Dolberg property in the middle, and Kathy Austin's property to the east. The Dolberg obviously being the smallest of the lots. The little dotted part of a circle is the portion of the Dolberg lot that lies within 200 feet of Kathy Austin's well. So anything within that circle, you can't put a septic there, in the current code. The second page of the package looks at Chris Green's well, and does the same thing. So you see a second circle. And anything within the union of those two circles can't accommodate a well. The lot contains about 65,000 square feet total. The portion inside those two intersecting circles is about three-quarters of that 65,000 feet. It's around 48,000 feet. And the two chunks that so far are allowable for a septic field is one at the top, which has something on the order of 7,000 square feet, and one at the bottom, which has about 10,000 square feet. However, we got one more well to go. The location of the well, the septic tank, and the septic field on the Dolberg property are not shown on the site plan submitted with the application. Given that the septic field is of critical importance here, I think it's unusual that they weren't, and we certainly should have been. So I don't know where the Dolberg well is, but assuming that it's close to the house, if you look at page three, and for the sake of illustration, I kind of averaged the possible locations and centered my little circle right at the middle of the house, whereas the one place it can't be, but it's, you know, I do not know where the well on this property is. What you'll see is that the 200-foot circle around that point basically takes everything else out, and what's left is on the fourth page. There's nothing left. There's nothing left. So if the two-hundred-foot limit applies, there's not enough space to accommodate the field. Even if the Dolberg well is re-drilled to free up one of those chunks so that circle doesn't cause the same problem, both the main and expansion fields, hopefully calculated with a reasonable bedroom count, would have to fit within it. And the well itself would have to be drilled at least two-hundred-foot feet from all septic fields, including Kathy Austin's and Chris Green's, and I didn't even get into that. So the engineer that's been hired for this job has a job cut out for him. This is a puzzle which may have no solution. And it's a direct side, a direct consequence of the small size of the lot. But if, if to become current code compliant, both the well and the septic system have to be moved, it will be prohibitively expensive. And it will virtually assure that any expansion of the number of bedrooms is going to occur under the radar. Nobody's going to come back to the health department or the planning board and say, gee, I've added a few bedrooms, do I have to change my septic field? Not a realistic expectation. And this may result in an inadequate septic system. Now, I didn't use survey equipment for this analysis, but I'd be surprised if any of my numbers were significantly off. The engineering review will give us more precise numbers, but I don't believe it will change my basic conclusion. This tiny block cannot support the increase in density that is being applied for. And to my knowledge, there is no board that is empowered to issue variances to Department of Health regulations. If the applicant's assertion of only two bedrooms serves as basis for the review, and expect an uproar if it does, it may conclude that the current system, even if it violates current code, is adequate. But it's critical for the board to understand how many bedrooms the system will support, since I expect that the actual number will be more like four in the immediate future. Mother, daughter, sister, sister. And as Chris mentioned, would easily grow to six over the longer term, perhaps under new owners, by retaining the use as a bedroom of the existing studio in the upstairs of the garage and expanding the two-plus bedrooms to three, as suggested in the real estate ad. Conversion is likely if the accessory dwelling is rented out or Airbnb after its initial use, again, as suggested by the real estate ad. Or it's used by future owners and it is what amounts to truly a second primary residence on the same property. Conversion of non-bedrooms to bedrooms requires no town approval. And it's easy to sneak under the radar. So the town would have little control over this in the future. And if this is done under the radar, the Department of Health wouldn't get involved either. So this application may be the town's only point of control over the future use and density of this property. Approving it is setting us up for what may prove to be an intractable problem down the road. It's a license to create a density that renders the current septic system inadequate, possibly with no conventional means of making it adequate. Even if there were other objections to this application, and there will be some, this alone should constitute reason to deny it. Third, as Chris mentioned, there is a hardship issue involved here. The desire of Ms. Dolberg to have a separate space in which to care for a seriously ill sister is understandable to everyone on the board and every neighbor. There's a natural inclination to approve this application in order to support that decision. But the brutal truth is that this accessory dwelling will be around long after the hardship situation ends, and the neighborhood will have to contend with the consequences. Granting the application will give the planning board a moment of gratification, and the long-term consequences may be invisible to them. Granting it will also give neighbors that moment of gratification, but this will have to be weighed against those long-term consequences, which may include a transient Airbnb-type population on a tiny lot in a dwelling too close to the road and within inadequate, with an inadequate septic system. So I hope we are not regarded as insensitive overs for taking into consideration long-term consequences versus the short-term gratification. We find those long-term consequences to potentially be highly adverse. There is one long-term consequences, consequence for the town, however. The granting of a special permit for increasing density on a lot of such inappropriate size and configuration can always serve to undermine the integrity of the zoning law and the entire infrastructure supporting it. That's a cost that will be borne by every citizen in the town, including us neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I bring my computer with me?
You want?
Yeah. Probably already should know about what's going on here. My name is Bartolo Coco. I live on nineteen Hagerty Hill Road. I live there since 2004. When I received this certified letter regarding this, I said, whatever, it's all, maybe it's a small thing, no problem. But then I realized that, I said, well, I want to check on it and see what's going on. So the first thing I did was to Google fifteen Hagerty Hill Road, Ecomap, Rio, product farm, and zero. And with all the pictures. Have you seen that, all of you? All of you be nice for you to see. Would you like to see?
No, I can't, I'm not a person that's seen a person.
And that blows my mind. Because basically, that property, a five-car garage with a barn in front of the house, it looks like it's against the RC5 code. I mean, this is not my thing. So I kept looking at it. So I kept looking at it. And I realized that there are discrepancies between the public records that you have and what the reality is. That's why it blows my mind that you went there, you saw the place, and you still think or believe that application should be considered. In my view, you shouldn't even be here for this application. The reason is, the garage, five-car garage, an air door. I know it will be Hagerty Hill. I've never seen any garage that has that kind of size. What is the total square footage of the garage embargoed? Do you know?
I don't have that information with me now.
Oh. It's supposed to be probably more than. The assessor says it's fourteen hundred and forty-two square feet for a garage. Now, I realized later on, talking to my neighbor that has a memory of that. She's ninety-nine years old, Ms. June Blom, dear friend. She said that in the public records, there is a house most of twenty-four hundred square feet. And it was, a part of it, it was converted in what they call apartment. Because her mom was old and they wanted it. So already here, we have a situation where, not at all my knowledge, that is the only place I know that I have a house with an apartment. The apartment, I guess, it has a fireplace, it has a kitchen, it has a bedroom. So basically, it's mostly, maybe four hundred square feet. Separate entrance. So I kept looking at this record. I said, I want to see what's going on in this place. Well, the public records, either, they don't say exactly what's going on there. Because we have things about the garage, the request of the garage, and the barn, and the accessory dwelling. Do you have that? You should. Here's this one. It comes from the town of Rhinebeck. It says that the improvements. Okay, first of all, residential building information. It has a twenty-four, forty-two square feet, two stories, two bedrooms. One, two full bath, one half bath, two kitchens. Second story is five-sixty. I guess it's the room upstairs on the second floor of the main house, correct?
Could well be.
You don't know?
Well, we didn't look at the house itself, the existing house, because that was not subject to the application.
Okay. Site one improvement, structure code cabin bungalow. I guess a bungalow? Well, maybe it's not wrong. Built in eighty-two, four hundred and thirty-two square feet. Slide number one, improvement number six, shed machine, most square foot. Porch, open deck. Slide number one, improvement number three, structure code garage one detached, eight hundred and sixty-four square feet. Another improvement, garage detached, zero square feet. At the bottom, there is absolutely no accuracy or completeness guarantee is implied or intended. All information on this map is subject to change based on a complete title search or field survey. Did you have a field survey done? Have you ever done a field survey?
No.
No. It's been working a lot, it's two, twelve, no.
That's also not on there.
So the property is called as apartment, building apartment under two-fifteen. So I want to look at what is two-fifteen code. On the line in the state of New York, two-fifteen. One family year-round residence with accessory apartment. Is that correct?
I believe it is.
A one-family, year-round residence with a secondary self-contained dwelling unit. Accessory apartments are usually contained within or added to the principal residence and are often occupied by immediate family members. So I want to look at the application. The application doesn't now have sufficient information and technical details. It does not include the full set of pictures and total square footage of the garage storage studio. It does not tell the actual use of the space. The application, written statements are not satisfactory. They do not explain in detail what it will be the outcome. On the following question in the application, please explain whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties would be created by granting of the area variance. Sorry for my. You understand, you understand. The answer is there, there will be no impact. I put a lot of question marks on that. Because the next thing that came to my mind is, how they have determined that, that there is no impact? The application is not very well detailed with the plans. They didn't ask me or anybody in the area if it would happen or whatever. That's why we are here. I don't, I don't.
Bartolo?
There would be.
Bartolo, may I interrupt you?
Yes, sure.
You're taking a very long time.
I know.
Other people would like to speak.
I understand. But to me, because I put a lot of time on this, and it's in the public hearing, I have the right to, living there, to say and to take my time. I put more than forty-eight hours on this. And as I said at the beginning, maybe we shouldn't be here. There will be a significant impact because the property will become de facto, in reality, a two-family in a small lot, in a RC5 zone. That, it will increase greatly the value of the property overnight. There will be more traffic, more noise. It will definitely change the character of the neighborhood. And this, now I have the last thing to say. Because this thing, to me, it doesn't appear that it makes sense. My judgment, my view on this is. Who did appoint you? Who does that? Well, you have the power of decision in granting an application of a variance.
That, wait a minute, that's the zoning board of appeals. We cannot grant carry events.
Okay.
We don't have that authority.
Correct. But the thing is, how, who would be liable if something is done wrong? Who is going to look that after the ordeal is done, they will not rent the house? They will not sell the property? And everything will be done according to what the zoning law in Rhinebeck is? So who does appoint you?
The town boards.
The town boards. They are elected officials, okay? Does any office in the county or the state can oversee what is being done in this town?
No, New York is a homeworld state. Therefore, zoning regulations are given over to the cities, villages, and townships in New York State.
So technically, nobody's liable if something is, doesn't go according to the law.
If you believe, or if anyone believes, a decision made by any town board is incorrect, they can find Article seventy-eight in New York State Supreme Court challenging it.
Say again?
You can find it, Article seventy-eight, look for the New York State Supreme Court, down in the Kipsey. Challenging the decision that you thought was made erroneously, that certain facts were not taken into consideration, that should have been, any number of different things that you feel that the decision was deficient, and ask the court overturn the decision.
Okay. I want to read you what the Zausch was advertised. How the Zausch was advertised. Is in that rio.com.
Fools have advertised by the current owner or a previous owner?
It's before, I guess it's a previous owner. Because basically, what I did was, I was in rio.com, I put in the address, and I put in our soul, basically. The house has been sold. So this is what came out. Located less than three miles out of Rhinebeck Village on a beautiful landscape, one-point-five acres, this immaculate two-family property. That is home of a two-plus bedroom, two-point-five bath, old-style range that could be easily converted to a three-bedroom. The home sits fast back, okay, I'll take some parts out because I'm not related to. The home also has a first-floor master suite with a fireplace and then the second floor is home of a nice-sized bedroom that overlooks the parking backyard, full bath and a walk-in closet. The property is also owned by the two-thousand square feet, five-bay, well-insulated heated garage with a half a bath, one hundred amp electric and a second fifty-amp service fire compressor. And the second floor, five-hundred-and-fifty square feet, finished studio with full bath and vaulted ceilings. This own is currently zoned as a two-family and offer mother, daughter, and Airbnb potential. When I read this, when I see everything else, you've got to excuse me. But I believe that, basically, we are following a script already. They bought this property, took common tenants. Are they relatives or not? I don't know, I don't want to know. But the bottom line to me is like, if the two people, they're friends, they buy a house, six-hundred-plus thousand dollars, and they want to leave just in one own, and they already know exactly what's going on in their family. And now, not even three months after they buy the house, they immediately come in to you in this place and say, we want to make this little variance. We want to make, there's a little, little exception, just two doors. Without the respect, I don't buy. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Edna Lockman. I live at Hagerty Hill Road.
Judith. Vivo justo a tu lado. Quiero decir bienvenido al vecindario. Creo que finalmente descansarán, es un vecindario muy amigable y es un mundo hermoso. Así que eventualmente lo disfrutarán mucho. Y también quiero decir que estoy muy triste por tu hermana enferma. Mi hermano falleció de la leucemia. Fui la dona mayor, dona mayor de un donante, así que tengo algo aquí que me siento mal. Quiero hablar un poco con el equipo de planificación sobre esta idea de que ya hay un gran garage existente allí y esto es solo una cuestión de mover un accesorio de dwelling a ese garage. Así que eso parece ser una cuestión. Está bien, estamos bien, detachados accesorios de dwellings todo el tiempo. ¿Por qué este gran grupo de personas que viven en este vecindario piensan que esto es diferente? La razón por la que pensamos que es diferente es porque, como saben, cuando agregas cualquier accesorio a un lot, estás aumentando la densidad. Y cuando lo haces poniendo en una estructura de accesorios, entonces es obvio. Es un uso más intenso de esa estructura existente. Será más obviamente una pequeña casa con un garaje adentro, sentada frente a una casa más grande en la parte trasera. Ambos de ellos completamente visibles desde la carretera. El garage en sí mismo, solo 39 pies de la carretera. Y eso es lo que no queremos, porque vivimos en el distrito RC5, es río, campo rural. Y pensamos que tenemos un río campo rural. Aunque hay otros pequeños lots en esa carretera, no muchos, también hay muchos grandes lots donde ni siquiera ves casas. Y la mayoría de las casas están situadas atrás y bien controladas por árboles. Y así es como nos gustaría mantenerlo, es realmente importante para nosotros, que siga rural. Así que, disculpen. En 15 Haggerty Hill Road, hay una gran diferencia entre básicamente un apartamento invisible y una casa que se encuentra bastante lejos de la carretera y un vivienda muy visible en un garage de dos cuartos, dos pisos, que terminaría pareciendo una casa separada con un garaje adentro sentado frente a la otra casa. Y hay otra cuestión. Nadie que hemos hablado ha recibido la oportunidad de venir a este board y hablar de la adición de un accesorio a la casa. No sabemos cuándo se agregó, pero sabemos que en 2002, los Hobsons obtuvieron un permiso de construcción para remodelar su casa para agregar una baña y media para que tuvieran dos bañas media allí. Tenemos los planes que estaban en el departamento de construcción. Y puedo mostrarlos a ustedes. Esos planes muestran tres cuartos, uno arriba, dos abajo, una cocina. En 2005, hay otro permiso de construcción para agregar la full bath arriba en el garage. No podemos encontrar nada sobre la adición de un accesorio. Tiene que ser después de 2002, porque hay todos los planes de piso y no los muestra. En el, ¿qué es? La ley de zoning de 1989, se requiere un permiso especial para un accesorio en una casa. Así que, y la mayoría de nosotros no sabíamos que había un accesorio en la casa. Así que ahora estamos oídos, no solo hay un accesorio en la casa en un lot de 1.5 acres, pero el dueño quiere ponerlo en este gran edificio a 39 pies de la carretera. Y pueden entender por qué estamos un poco preocupados. El ad que el Sr. Coco estaba hablando dice, zona dos familia, no sabemos qué significa. No sabemos si el evaluador descubrió que hay una segunda cocina y, ya saben, decidió que así sería evaluado, así que no estamos seguros, porque no sabemos cuándo se puso ese apartamento allí. La densidad supone que es importante en Rhinebeck. Tenemos un plan comprensivo, el objetivo principal fue aumentar las tallas para reducir la densidad con el tiempo o a largo plazo, para el bien del pueblo. Y tenemos una ley de zoning, la diferencia más dramática en ella fue las cambios de tallas. Así que, ¿por qué es okay en nuestro distrito de cinco acres que haya dos, esencialmente, viviendas principales cerca de la carretera en 1.5 acres? Quiero decir solo algunas otras cosas. La Junta de Apelaciones de Zoning, una de las cosas que hacen cuando ven una aplicación es que preguntan, ¿hay una alternativa razonable? En este caso, creo que el equipo de planificación también debería hacer esa pregunta. Pensamos que la alternativa razonable a esta aplicación es remodelar ese 2,442 cuadrado casa de cualquier manera requerida para acomodar a quien sea que vaya a vivir allí. Y hubo una discusión sobre la necesidad de un área de juego para la hija de 11 años que será adolescente en unos años. Hay un hermoso estudio arriba en el garage con volantes y una full bath. Cualquier preteen o adolescente moriría por tener ese tipo de espacio para estudiar, para reunirse con amigos y demás. Así que hay soluciones a los problemas de este dueño que no requieren poner esos dos, esencialmente, casas en ese lot de 1.5 acres. Y eso es lo que estamos pidiendo que piensen. Solo tengo un par de más. Esta parte de nuestra carretera es muy especial para nosotros. Chris Green ya ha hablado de su granja al lado de su casa, 26 acres. Al otro lado de 15 Haggerty Hill Road es la casa de Kathy Austin, 110 años de edad, es de piedra, la ha preservado hermosamente. Justo a la calle es lo que el pueblo llama un distrito de multi recursos. Tiene el Folsberg Creek corriendo por él. Parte de él es el histórico Brockledge Estate, que está en los registros estatales y nacionales. Si ese es un distrito importante, ¿por qué es okay justo a la calle de él tener este relativamente dramático aumento de densidad? Creo que eso es todo lo que tengo que decir. Amamos nuestra carretera, es hermosa, está llena de vida, todo el mundo en ella trabaja juntos, cuidamos de nosotros mismos. Nos encantaría ser amigables con la señora Delberg y el otro dueño y su hermana, y eso sería nuestra intención. Pero queremos proteger la carretera y pidiemos que nos ayuden a hacerlo.
Gracias.
Hola, mi nombre es Michelle Kornhouser, vivo con mi esposo en 12 Haggerty Hill Road. Envíé una carta esta mañana que creo que fue distribuida a todos ustedes. No quiero leer toda la carta, solo quiero decir un par de cosas sobre nuestras preocupaciones. Y principalmente, eso tiene que ver con el uso futuro de la propiedad si el accesorio se mueve al garage. Estamos muy tristes por tu hermana y nos comparten. Pero acabamos de comprar nuestra casa en diciembre de 2018. Y una de las razones por las que compramos la casa fue porque amamos el sentido del vecindario. Queríamos vivir cerca, o tener vecinos que estaban involucrados en el vecindario y sus casas. Esta es nuestra casa cercana que tenemos, y estamos criando a nuestro hijo joven, que ahora tiene siete meses, que vino antes, pero felizmente, porque es feo. Y estamos muy preocupados por lo que pasará en el futuro si esta autorización es otorgada. Hemos escrito la lista en Zillow y en Realtor, donde el hogar ya ha sido advertido como potencial Airbnb. Y estamos muy preocupados que eso sea una real posibilidad, que se convirtiera en eso, que sería un candidato principal para algo así. Y luego habría un constante flujo de estudios de personas que no conocemos, que no están involucrados en el área, que no tienen el mismo cuidado con el área que nosotros, potencialmente. Y nos hace sentir un poco inseguros con nuestro hijo pensando que justo a la calle, nuestra propiedad básicamente es justo a la calle. El garage está en muy clara vista de nuestra casa. Así que estamos muy preocupados y pensamos que es una real posibilidad de que eso sea lo que sea el futuro de esto. Y parece injusto para el bien del futuro de la situación a corto plazo poner este tipo de posibilidad dañina en nuestro vecindario. Nosotros... Eso es básicamente el sentido de nuestras preocupaciones. Sentimos que la señora Delberg y su amigo compraron la propiedad, creo que en abril de 2019. Sabían que cuando entraban allí eran dos individuos separados comprando una casa juntos. Sabían lo que contenía y es un poco injusto saber ahora, solo unos meses después, venir y decir, bueno, esta propiedad no cumple nuestras necesidades. Tenemos que hacer toda esta reestructuración importante que será un daño a nuestro vecindario. Sentimos que es un poco injusto para todos los demás que viven allí y no quiero verlo pasar.
¿Todo el mundo me escucha? Estoy escuchando ustedes en la televisión, no puedo oír a nadie, así que... Mi nombre es Kathy Austin, vivo en 17 Haggerty Hill Road y en unos meses voy a vivir allí 50 años. Ha sido una de las alegrías de mi vida ser capaz de mirar desde mi ventana y ver vistas fabulosas que están disponibles. No mucho antes, cuando el garage apareció, lo detuvo un poco. Y desde que he estado allí mucho tiempo, cambiar no es fácil para mí. Incluso me preocupa cuando las personas de la calle de la calle dejan sus contenedores fuera demasiado tiempo. Así que soy muy sensible a lo que veo desde mis ventanas. Tengo ventanas hermosas y es una alegría sentarme frente a ellas y sentir el sol entrar y iluminar mi vida. Así que todo, oh, quería decir inicialmente, esto no es personal, esto no es personal. Y así que eso quería decir, me olvidé. Así que cualquier variación en el tema para mí parece que es un golpe. Y cuando miré todas las variaciones que esta conversión requeriría, fue abrumadora. Parece a mí que hay una necesidad abrumadora de cambiar todo. Y no, en mi mente, mejora mis visiones. Gracias.
Hola, mi nombre es Kevin Mahin, 21 Haggerty Hill Road. Solo seré muy rápido. Terry y yo y mi esposa hemos estado allí durante 16 años ahora. Y una de las razones por las que hemos mudado a ese vecindario es que es una calle muy tranquila, muy buenas casas en la calle. Y tu casa es muy buena también. Lo principal de lo que nos preocupa es el impacto que va a tener, tal vez no inmediatamente, pero hacia la carretera. Si tenemos dos casas de tres cuartos en ese pequeño lot justo a la calle. Eso potencialmente puede convertirse en una unidad de alquiler, en algún momento una casa de tres cuartos. El único problema que hemos visto en esa calle desde que hemos estado allí ha sido una alquiler que ha bajado un par de lots. El policía fue allí varias veces y esta fue una alquiler, una de las únicas unidades de alquiler que he conocido en la calle. Y existe el potencial de que las cosas sucedan, si la gente no respeta la casa, el hogar. Si esta es una alquiler ahora, tenemos los mismos problemas que teníamos con esta casa, una unidad de alquiler. Así que rápidamente, eso es lo que nos preocupa. La casa se ve muy bella en la casa, solo queremos mantener, preocupado por el impacto, la calle muy bella como es. Los vecinos son geniales y, ya saben, aceptaremos, disfrutarán del vecindario, estoy seguro de que algo. Pero eso es nuestra preocupación, no queremos tener un precedente que ahora puedes poner un garage en la parte de frente de tu lot de 1.5 acres y convertirlo en una casa y venderla. Porque creo que simplemente destruirá el nature de ese vecindario.
Gracias. Quiero hablar esta noche. Y el equipo de planificación tiene cualquier pregunta esta noche.
Tenemos una pregunta.
Sí.
Solo quería clarificar que cuando la señora Delberg compró la casa, estaba ya en la propiedad menor. No tenía nada que ver con ella. Hubo cinco garages que vinieron con esta propiedad que permanecieron vacías, excepto por una, dos carburadores que se usó con ella y su amigo. Así que no hay adición de ninguna estructura, no hay impacto de toneladas de personas viniendo y viniendo. Todavía es ella y una hermana deshabilitada. Así que no estoy seguro, entiendo la preocupación y me comparto, pero quiero explicar que esto es algo que ella compró como es. Ella no la buscó para ser un parcelo menor. Ella no la buscó para tener cinco carburadores, sí, la compró de esa manera. Y cuando las circunstancias se hicieron evidentes de que ella necesitaba este espacio para ayudar a su hermana, es por eso que estamos aquí. No tiene nada que ver con ningún Airbnb, no tiene nada que ver con las personas que vayan y vayan o causar caos. Es solo una señora enferma y su hermana. Eso es básicamente todo. Y no hay ningún cambio en el edificio en absoluto, excepto por eliminar una puerta de garage y agregar una entrada. Y eso será una unidad separada del estudio arriba, no tiene nada que ver con el estudio arriba que ya existe. Así que solo quería clarificar a todos que esto no es algo que ella fue y dijo, quiero un parcelo menor en tamaño y quiero que tenga cinco garages y que permanezcan vacías. and I want it to have five garages and I want them to remain vacant. You know? So we're trying to help her out by doing the right thing. So that's why I said we engaged an engineer, because David Pearson asked that we find the existing, give an assessment of what's there. So we did that. And I'm a waiter reporter and I apologize that I don't have a drink. But we have, we are not causing any change on the exterior of the building. We're not adding any walls outside. We're not doing anything to impact anybody's view or change the look of anything or, you know, have school buses coming with people. There is no such thing.
I'd actually like to say something. First of all, I don't know if you can hear me, because I'm... But, hold on. First of all, I'd really like to say I'm sorry about Susan because she immediately was the most welcoming person to us coming in. And I did talk to her. And she was actually the reason that I didn't do that. I didn't go up, throw a hot plate. I didn't understand what that all meant. And the reason I didn't understand what all that meant was because of what Bartolo had said, that this is the advertisement, this is what we were sold, you know, you have all the space. Well, that the ad comes from the first owner, so this is what we were buying. And so that's why, my sister was diagnosed, I knew. I didn't, we thought she was doing really well. She has a cell type that's very treatable. And we thought that we'd have many, many years. And then her PET scan showed that it had spread. We did not expect that at all. I'm a nurse, so I really didn't expect that she's going strong. Kettering, she was taking the treatment that was supposed to target this very, very well, and it just failed. So initially, I thought, you know, what can I do here? Where can I live? And my friend and I saw this, and we had the accessory apartment, we had the dwelling. And I said, well, we have this great studio, I can live there. But what ended up happening was the stairs would be too much. I mean, I could put a kitchen in there, I could apply for that. But I can't because I can't get her up those stairs. And the walkway is quite long as well. And then the other piece of that is that I have the same genetic mutation. And eventually, this could very well be where I have to go. Aside from that, I don't believe that's any of your problem. I believe that's my problem. I just, I wish that neighbor-wise, somebody had come to us and just said, we're really, really worried. You know, we're worried. We would have talked to anybody. We would have, you know, welcomed anybody to come talk to us about it. I, we try and, we're just trying to do this the right way. We sort of recognize that initially, things weren't done the way you said, that it's saying it's this, it's that, you know? And that, as Edna said, that, you know, where are these plans? Where are these things? We realized we have to really do this the right way. We want to be upfront, we want to be open, we want, we want it done properly. And that's why we're here. We don't want to, you know, do backward channels and then, you know, we just want to be open. We want to, that's really it. It's expensive, it's, you know, it's heart-wrenching, it's time-consuming, it's scary. I've never been through something like this, a renovation like this, or anything like this. I'm doing, I don't like coming up in front of crowds. I drive home and I'm sobbing on the way home because I'm afraid my sister might see the video and say, don't do this for me, it's too much for you, don't do it. You know, I, I just, I, we're just trying to do things the right way. And the other piece is, we asked, when Melody and Mike came to the house, if there was a way we could write something in that says that we don't intend to use it as a rental. You know, if they need to help, you know? That's not something I would do, especially in light of the fact that there is a small child. We don't want to bring anybody in. We don't, there's a small child in this house. We don't, we don't want to bring people in that could be dangerous. And frankly, to be perfectly honest, there are times I see people parked across the street watching what we're doing. That's scary for us. So if somebody wants to come ask us, you know, knock on the door, it's okay. It's okay.
Thank you. Sharon, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could show us, if you could pull up the map, if you could show us where the septic was.
Sure.
Or the well.
Sure. Part of what happened when we bought the property is we were told there were two septics. We were told that there was a 500-gallon septic to the studio. And then when we did the walkthrough, we were told, that's not a septic, that's a dry well. And I called Dave Pearson and said, help us, help us. So that's why we're going through all of this. So, I don't know, I mean, I know where it is. So the septic is here, the septic is right in front of me, right here.
Did you move, so that...
Sure.
Going to the main house and the garage?
So the septic is right over here.
In front of the main house?
In front of the main house.
So it's already within 200 feet of a couple of wells?
Yes. Yes, we have actually faced that physically on the way to the engineer to just get an idea. And they were very far away.
Where is the well?
The well is behind the house, over in this area here.
So it's also within 200 feet of your well? So it's within 200 feet of three wells?
Correct. My understanding, and I don't know, I don't know personally anything about that. When I spoke to Dave Pearson, he said to check with our neighbors and make sure that we were 100 feet from each well. And that's why I went over that day and I asked where your well was. And I know that Jen had gone over to Kathy and asked for her well.
And we had the property surveyed and he indicated where the wells of the neighborhood and properties are.
I'd like to interrupt for a second. We're talking about health department issues. That's what the health department gets paid for. That's what her engineer gets paid for. We are all, in my opinion, amateurs in that area and we should not be making judgments in this room whether it's feasible or not. So I would suggest that we let the health department and this lady's engineer fit together and look at the results that they come up with, not what we think should happen.
Karen, do you think you have it?
All right. Question is, is there a residential CBO for the garage now?
There is a CBO for the bathroom in the upstairs of the studio.
So there are two dwellings on the property? And so it's just shifting the occupancy of the second unit in the house to this? So there would still be only two units, is that correct?
Yes, that's the intent.
And then there would be only one bedroom in the main house?
Yes.
That's a very large house for one bedroom.
We can judge how people live, but that's the intent.
And Michael, what is the, I mean, just using another room as a bedroom, there's nothing to it, right?
From a, from a, bedroom count is what determines the size of the septic, adequacy of the septic.
I understand.
So if bedroom count's not going up, assuming the septic are adequate, then it would not be a problem.
Well, how does the bedroom count go down from where they are?
If something is removed and can be verified as it has indeed been removed as a bedroom.
All right, but then nobody would know if it got used as a bedroom.
That's always the problem.
And also, is there, two questions. Is there any restriction on the amount of variances we can afford?
There, that's up to the ZBA. Generally, they're supposed to try to come up with the least number, the smallest variance possible, if that's feasible to do the subject. Certainly, if it goes over a certain level, they feel is excessive and they return on the variance request. But that's, that's their judgment. And I think also, just to, also, what Woody would say, the town of Bryanburg does not have a sanitary code. Therefore, we are intended upon the Dutchess County Health Department. And whatever they say and certify, that is what we work with because we don't have the basis, the legal basis, to challenge their decision with something else. Once again, I don't quite know how you go about challenging the health department other than going down and saying, we believe you made a mistake and asking to go back out and check it again. But we don't have a sanitary code in the town of Bryanburg, so we cannot say where a septic could go, where a well could go, whatever. And we depend upon the health department to tell us that.
And is the health department, will we tend to be that, decides how many bedrooms there are?
No, they decide whether the site, given the number of bedrooms the person wishes to put in, whether a septic system can be developed that is adequate to service that number of bedrooms. And if not, then the bedroom count has to go down.
Mr. Trimble, I have a question today. Who decides what is or is not a bedroom? Because, like a robe, if I knew the name, it's still a robe.
It's a very good question. It is not unusual for plans to come before us with dens, libraries, galleries, you name it, that turn out being bedrooms. It's probably the most difficult aspect of enforcement, both for planning and your building code.
Is there any objective standard applied to determine what a bedroom is?
Generally, what we have heard is a room with upper egress on the window and a closet is often looked upon as a bedroom. But to my knowledge, there is no legal hardened fast regulation, which is what makes it very, very difficult. Very often, I've heard people told, we work three bedrooms, but if you're going to put in a two-bedroom type of septic system, we'll just call it a den. And once you get the CBO.
So in this, in this case, taking the garage as it is intended to be reconfigured, you have the upstairs studio, which we know has, at some point, had a bed in it and has a full bathroom. And then downstairs, you have two adjacent rooms that are precisely the same size. One is called a bedroom and one is called a studio or study. And Ms. Dolberg has said that she and her sister are going to stay in the bedroom, but not the study. So your judgment is that that constitutes a one-bedroom structure?
It's, I wouldn't say, it's my judgment. The problem that we face is we don't have hardened fast regulations determining exactly what is a bedroom and therefore has to be part of the size of the septic system.
I don't have an issue taking that wall down and calling, and having you guys come in and seeing that it is strictly a one-room. My sister and I, you know, we're 21 months apart. We grew up in the same bedroom. Neither one of us has ever been married. My brother's never been married. If I have, and if I have to take care of her, I'm happy to be in the room with her. We can take that wall down.
Well, as I've said before, my, my concern is not with what you recommend. It's not with what your friend is doing. My concern is with what happens in the future. Things change very quickly as they've changed for me and as they've changed for you.
My, my answer to that, honestly, for me, is that the most we can do is promise you what we can do. And if we sell it and somebody comes in and does that to the table or whatever, we're just trying to do this in a way that's transparent so that you know what's there. And I can't promise you what happens. And I don't, I don't plan on moving, but I can't, you can't promise me that you won't move.
No, I can't either.
But I, I, I just feel as though, as long as we're trying to do this in the most transparent way, this is, we're who you have right now.
No.
I think if anyone wants to speak, they have to come up with a microphone so that we can get you on the microphone. I also want to make sure you understand that we're continuing the public hearing, I believe, until December 16. We're hoping at that, though, I know that the ZBA is meeting Wednesday night. I believe that's when their public hearing is typically. They then, at their next meeting, have a decision, a determination, assuming they close the public hearing. I think that's one of the 60 days after they close their public hearing to make a determination on the variance request. So we may not know, we won't know from the ZBA what they have decided because they will not have decided at the meeting Wednesday night or maybe before they meet again. So we won't have that. Hopefully, we will have something from Mr. Ross and also from David Pearson. Maybe some guidance from the Dutchess County Health Department as to what they're finding and what correction they think that they're going in. Clearly, those two elements have to be determined in such a way that the planning board can go forward with this application.
Yes, Karen.
Is there any way to stipulate that a property, a section of a property cannot be rented at this?
To my knowledge, legally, no, there is no way. Please come up so that people can hear what you have to say.
Wait, sorry. In the application, they say that they will move the apartment, so-called apartment in the main dwelling into the garage. So they will move 500 square feet into a garage, into a new home, that it will be, how many square feet? 600 square feet. Basically, it's the size of the room upstairs and the room downstairs.
No, no, the room upstairs has a separate entrance and has nothing to do with the garage.
No, no, there is a room on the second floor of the garage. There is a room on the second floor of the garage.
That's what I think what she's saying is that the entrance to that is outside the side of the garage and it will not have an interior connection. Who are they proposing to put the accessory dwelling in the three-garage bay area?
But that brings us to three bedrooms.
It's megged.
That's a good question. It's considered a studio.
This is the entrance to the apartment to the studio.
My question at the beginning was, basing the application, they say they will remove the apartment in the main dwelling, dwelling, and they will bring it to the other one. And what it will become, they will tear it down with the apartment? Or what it will become of that apartment?
We will remove the kitchen.
And?
And it becomes a playroom.
So we have a lot of...
Part of it, if there is, if this application were to be approved, one of the terms would be that the accessory dwelling within the main building is removed and it can be verified by the building inspector.
What does it mean to remove, sir?
It means that the facilities for the kitchen are taken out, that the snow is not being used, is damaged, can be difficult to determine. But that basically is no longer a separate apartment, which requires both food facilities as well as a separate entrance in this and this and the other.
So again, we were going to have one bedroom with a 2,400-square-feet house. I couldn't believe it, sorry.
You know, we have some very remarkable structures in this town.
I, I, I don't know, I've never seen it. Maybe you'll show me, sorry.
I can do that.
If I can follow up on the comment that Woody made a few minutes ago. The conversation that we've just had about bedrooms illustrates why we are so worried. Because what you're telling us is bedrooms are self-declared, okay? It's like Indian ancestry in the US. You can declare yourself an Indian, your tribe is an Indian. If you declare something not a bedroom, it ain't a bedroom. And so on paper, you can change the number of bedrooms with a pencil and an eraser. And on the ground, you can change what's a bedroom and what isn't by moving some furniture. And so this is very, very difficult to verify. I think that what the, I agree with Woody that you've got to let the health department do what we pay the health department for. But on the other hand, I think that it is incumbent on the planning board to look ahead to say, what is the potential density on this property? And what are the implications of that? Because the property is so small that there's no building. Okay, you're very limited in what you can do on this property by way of enhancing the septic system. So the Board of Health is going to take the self-declared bedrooms, which in this case is two. I don't think anybody in this room really believes in their heart and soul. But they're going to go ahead and they're going to do something and says, this is what the septic system needs to be. Somebody's got to be outside the circle and say, okay, that's what the system has to be now. What could it have to be in the future? And is there a way that a one-and-a-half-acre lot can accommodate what it might have to be in the future? I don't think that's the planning board's, the health department's job. I think that that is the town's job. So at any rate, the discussion on bedrooms does not serve to ameliorate any of our concerns, if anything, it's enhanced them.
I understand. But I'd like to do, we have the number of the public hearings. We are going to continue this public hearing until December 16. In which case, we actually may have some more information coming through.
So... May I just make one more comment?
Very good.
Very good, Phil. I have a question for the board first.
That is, are you bored going to follow up to find out whether this is a legal apartment in the house? And is that relevant? I think you probably have to think about that and talk about it, but eventually, I think this group would like to hear the answer.
It is relevant, and I think it is subject to zoning enforcement officers to be looking at, because it is a violation on the property, and as you all know, applications for a potential specialty disclaimer site that cannot go forward if the violation is cleared.
Well, what the zoning enforcement officer said to me is, since the whole idea is to move it out of the house, then that would take care of the zoning violation.
Well, it's, it is her, her determination, which she considers to be, A, the violation, and B, which she considers to be acceptable remediation. The planning board cannot make that determination.
I have just one other comment, and that is, I, these are the 2002 plans that were approved for which a building permit was received from this town for the renovation of the house. So presumably, it was considered legal. It has three bedrooms. I'm going to make copies of these for the planning board. I hope you will...
Get those ourselves, but thank you for offering.
I hope you will look at them and, and think about the fact that there is a reasonable alternative to the needs of this owner that could be taken care of in the house. I counted a need for three bedrooms. One for Ms. Dahlberg and her sister, one for the daughter, and one for Mr. Dekun, or Ms. Dekun. That's these plans right here. They were approved. Thank you.
Could I have a motion to, to continue this public hearing on December 16th at...
What time do you want to do it? Do you want to set it at your time?
Yeah.
Or do you want to put it in the middle of it? Do you want to go like...
Later, I think.
I put it at seven, you want to do like 7:15?
7:15, it is. Did I hear a second?
Second.
On the favor?
All right.
Very good. Thank you. And you always can call Gretchen if any further information has come in, if you've learned anything new. But certainly, anything we do, we do at the, on the 16th of December. We'll wait for just a couple of minutes, so unless you all want to stay and do the rest of the six public hearings, member applications. I think maybe I want to go home to dinner Monday.
More fun to be had.
Thank you for coming. This is why we hold public hearings, to get information that we may not otherwise have access to.
Yes.
You want to sort of leave the building so everything will run here? Okay, we will not continue. We're going to go a little bit unsequenced. Thank you to Mr. Jacobs and Richard. And what we're going to do is, from Ms. Kristen Cheney here. Okay, can you come up and present?
I'm sure there's a map. Be quick, this is easy. No bathrooms, no houses, not visible from the road.
Wait a second, wait a second. There was a cow up in that field.
Yes, and he got out. I'm very sorry. We're simply, there's two lots that are 82 acres in aggregate. A piece of someone's house backs up to it, and so they would like to own five of those 82 acres. And so we're just simply adjusting the lot line so that they can extend their existing lot and just have more land. That's it. It's not visible from the road. There's no entry to it at all. They'd have to drive through my property to get there, so there's no, no way to get there except for the existing building that's already there. So just someone extending their lot of 10 acres to 15 acres.
Who did the septic, sir?
I did. It was I and Edna had a conflict, and it was a very simple septic. It's just a piece of land, nice and clear, a nice piece of farmland. They're going to add five acres to the back of the property, of the neighbor's property. Actually, absolutely no planning board concerned.
And at first, I recognized that as a member of the board, and any, any thought after what we said?
No, I know that Woody took a careful look at conditions on the ground.
It was mud.
You could take that a long ways. Is there anything here from the C A D? Okay, I'm assuming they're happy too. Any questions from members of the board? Any questions from members of the public? Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
A motion.
Second.
Thank you.
On the favor?
Aye.
No, I think we're just going to just go right through it. Okay, I'm going to just, we have a resolution of approval for you. Now, private planning board, different access laws in the application of Kristen Cheney, Peter Rassik for minor subdivision and associated lot line adjustment. Reaffirm hard classification as type 2 under seeker based on review of specific information reported to the planning board members. Site visit, clients that vote consistent with the objective statement, chapter 101 subdivision of land, and with respect to the minor subdivision allowed in lot line operation, clients that vote consistent with conflict 101. We approve the application, including the minor subdivision plan sheet prepared by Rick Crawford, L. Campbell, L. S. David, June 5th, 19, nope, 2019. No, no, that's what happens up here. authorize the planning board, share the stamp and sign. Your vote cited site management to have been set at written deal conditions with an 180 calendar days of adoption of this. Stamp in the subdivision plan is non-jurisdictional subdivision providing purchases owned by Duchess County Public Health. Submission of accepted survey map and form number specified in chapter 101. Submission of the deeds to be filed with Duchess County Quick Trappers, so that it is entered. And payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursables due the time of running. Could I have a motion to approve?
A motion.
Second. I'll put on my glasses so I can see who you are. Kathy?
I said, oh, hi.
No, no, we, thank you. Woody?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I go, aye. So once you get the thing from me to stamp, sign your report.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Can I thank the others for waiting? Our next one, Mansour. Is anyone here for Mansour? Okay, this one, I think we're going to have to continue again. I think they're not...
Undetermined, I think we said.
Undetermined?
I don't take this sure of the word.
Okay. Could I have a motion to do so?
A motion.
Okay, there are seconds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Mr. Jacob? And thank you for your patience.
Yes, that was a hard call back to talk of. I hope, I hope all these neighbors make peace with each other is really my hope after hearing that. But thank you all. I'm Chuck Jacob. My wife Valerie and I have lived in Rhinebeck for 12 years, next to the library, in between the library and the Scholder Farm. When we came here in 2007, we had children but not grandchildren. We now have grandchildren, and our project for which we seek approval kind of stems from the fact that we have grandchildren. There is a, well, on our property, there are three buildings, 11, 15, and 35 Wall Street. This concerns number 11, which is what we call the garage or carriage house. It's, was one time, I guess, we're not even sure when it was built. Larry thinks the 30s.
1938.
Yeah, 1938. And quite simply, now that our son and daughter-in-law, who use that house, have a child, a one-year-old, it's really difficult for them every time they come in with a stroller, groceries, whatever it is, you have to go up flights stairs, and it's not convenient. So we're seeking to put one room at ground level, and without, I'll turn it over to the experts.
Okay, I'll just tell you just a little bit of the numbers here to 10.58, 56 acre property with the buildings as Mr. Jacob mentioned. The proposed ground floor addition is 468 square feet. Okay, so here is the existing garage carriage house, and here's the proposed addition. It steps back from the property line almost 10 feet, nine foot 10 and so forth, where is the existing carriage house, as is, it's only a couple of feet from the property line. Here's the primary residence, and here's the cottage. So that's the, that's the gist of the project. And I guess we could open it up. Oh, one of the things that we've looked at since we were last here is what would be entailed. So we, we're looking at adding a bedroom, because there's room to do so, very, very simply, but not out of a distinct need for more bedrooms, but rather, given that we're moving kitchen living down here. As it turns out, the soil is very poor, perfect soil, it fails at the normal depth. A type 2 fill pad system would be required approximately five feet of fill. It would be most unfortunate visually and otherwise back here to, to place such a system. So we would like to propose that we, speaking of bedrooms, should not add another bedroom. So we actually want to change.
Is there any on the library?
I'm sorry. No, good guess, though. We'll pick office.
Trophy room.
And I think the clarity on that, what people were bringing up, as you said, is the enforcement and it's the building department, because it's, because it's a building code issue.
It is.
Yeah.
Who did the septic, sir?
Melody and I did.
What's your all think?
Well, see, I prepared a couple of notes. As the plan show, it currently is a two-story carriage house with a three-bedroom garage below and an apartment above. The siding on the first floor, to my surprise, was stone veneer. It looks like building stone because it's eight inches thick. The siding on the second floor is horizontal. I think it's wood, is that correct?
Pretty good, David.
Okay. The building is very close to the east property line, adjacent to the Star Library and the town pool, and it's separated from them by a lawyer fence. The addition is, is going to be constructed on the south side of the building, away from the road, and it's going to be a one-story with a flat roof that will hold a deck that will be screened on the east side for privacy. The siding in color is, was said to be the same as that on the existing second floor. And as stated, the addition will contain a kitchen, bath, and living area, and will have a dug foundation with crawl space, with our understanding. And on site, we were told that the second floor will contain only two bedrooms instead of the three that were planned to avoid re-engineering the septic. We recommended that the library and rec department be contacted to let them know about the proposed addition, since it was likely to be visible from those areas. And I noted that Jim Luddy has raised some questions on the style of the new windows, and I was wondering, how would you, if you had any thoughts on that?
Um, no, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't find the windows generally inappropriate. I think it's a nice addition. The location is good. Thank you for clarifying the bedroom count. It was some conversation in the field, and as you can tell from the prior application, these things are difficult always to know what the future holds. One of the reasons we asked you to be in touch with the library was we did talk about, as you explained in the field, and as I think is obvious in the paperwork, the fence there, the property line is very close to the Star Library, a foot to two feet most to the way the angle goes. And we observed some trees leaning dangerously in your direction, and your property manager indicated that you've had an ongoing working relationship with the library in terms of being able to clean up a library property. I think we asked you to go back and, and get some more clarification on that. Certainly, the trees that are there, and I think the entire property line and the chain link fence, this is the time to address that. And, you know, certainly, we are happy that the library is happy to have you working there and spend your money cleaning up their trees.
It's a great suggestion, just as a practical matter, and yes, I do stay, we, we all do stay in touch with them. I mean, when they were putting in new lighting, they came and looked to me and consulted me about it, and yeah, we pay for some of their tree workers. They don't, they don't have a big enough budget, frankly. And that's a lot, there's a lot of trees along that line, and if we just left it to the library, it would be a problem.
We were just asking that there be something in the record going forward that, you know, I mean, work done along there was brought to the attention of the library, and the library was in accordance with that, especially if it's tree removals, because it's...
Happy to do it.
Tree removals on their property. So, you know, if that can be detailed on the site plan, so we know which ones are coming down, you know, I mean, just, just for the record going forward. When we're in the field, Larry, you also mentioned, or the property manager mentioned that there were some water problems further back that relate to the rec park property, the town park?
I can, I can address that. Unfortunately, the town staff that runs the swimming pool have not always been careful in discharging chlorinated water. And I have never felt it was wise to escalate that beyond going next door and saying, "You're dumping chlorinated water." It's a, it's a seasonal stream, it's what I would call a seasonal stream. So when there's a lot of water, there's a stream across our property that flows across the Scholder Farm into, I guess it's the Rhinebeck Kill, it's not the Landsmann Kill, it's the Rhinebeck Kill. That, that seasonal stream joins the Rhinebeck Kills on the Scholder property, and if you look immediately west of the pool, you will see on the town's property that all the vegetation is dead, as though something has happened to it, which it has. And we have Forsythia attempting to cover that whole long chain link fence, and Forsythia, you know, they all die where the chlorinated water comes from the pool. It's better than it was, and I have not ever wished to do anything other than be a good neighbor with Park and the Rec Center. So when I perceive it to be a problem, I just go over there, or Gloria, that's who you met, and we talk to them, we just say, "Look, you know, you got to be a little more careful." It shouldn't, there's supposed to be a tank, I actually studied up on this, and I'm working from memory now, but they're supposed to have some kind of agitation or holding tank that the chlorinated water goes into, and if it's there a certain amount of time, it's then de-chlorinated, but it hasn't always been done that way. I hope that answers your question.
But Chuck and Valerie have not gone over there with pitchforks.
No, I just, I just...
No, no.
They went over to say, you know, please, you're running...
It's a park, it's a park. We, we, you know...
Just clarifying that it really isn't relevant to this application, but it was raised in the field as a property line.
That's further down, just so it's clear to people, that's maybe another, what, 250 feet? feet, 200, 300 feet south.
Now, you did talk, I also recall, so it is a partial foundation, it's not full basement, but you're going down, how many feet for the
We gotta go down to four feet below.
So you did talk about that excavated soil and how you were going to use that?
We're just going to use it to, you know, go around the foundation. I don't think there'll be a problem.
Were you talking, there's a catch base in there?
The catch base will not have to be
Does not have to be raised?
Right, correct. Yeah, it would just be kind of feathering the grating so it's gentle around and fitting with the, with the addition, but it would not impact the, now the catch base and the grade around the catch base won't be touched, that we're not looking at doing a raised setback system.
So, you know, when you're there at the property, this doesn't, the parking area isn't really visible from, you know, West Market Street, it's an increase in the number of cars. I don't see any real changes in the use of the property. It seems like an attractive minimal addition to meet the needs of a grown family.
Can you add some comments?
I think my gun was most of them. I'm talking about the windows, the side, I just, you know, mentioned the side angle a little bit. Lighting appears to be consistent with what we need to do with the lighting.
The, can I throw something in here, Jim? I was over to the library today and I said, you know,
You filled the microphone, Larry, so to each other.
We were over to the library today and I was explaining, here's a picture, which I had for you too, you can see a picture of this building. It's 484 square feet. I was speaking to Dave over there and he said, yeah, we're so happy that the Jacobs do not complain about our lights because apparently the last people, the people who sold it to them.
Oh boy.
Yeah, that's right. They were over there in their face about the lights.
Prior owners seem to be legend in Rhinebeck.
Yeah, so anyway, the lighting for this new project, Jim, is totally 300 watt or less lamps on the back of the building. I mean, you would, you would have to stand on the north side of the pool service building and the lights would have to be on because they're residential. They're not like the lights on the pavilion at the back of the park that go on automatically all night. So, you know, it's a pretty, it's a pretty low intensity. And I just want to mention, it's not exactly your problem, but the goal of Chuck and Valerie is to have it so that their children, who work very hard in the city, his son is an assistant district attorney for the Southern District, Charlie's wife is an attorney, the other two young people are hospital administrators, their other two children, and it's their goal, and we should always so lucky, to have it so when their children go out from the city, they come to their property. So all the efforts, because two years ago, we made an application for the little room on the back of the cottage where the daughter lives. So the daughter got an addition and somehow this other addition seems to have come into focus. So that's their goal with this, just to have it, the family property for as long as they can do it. That's their thing. And this building, by the way, did have Mary and Bob rented this building that, his son, Chuck's son, Charlie now lives in, they rented that building out as an apartment. So now, all three buildings on the property are occupied by family and I think that's their long-term intention. As we know, we don't know if that's the case, but the buildings are there. It's in existing condition, almost, except for this 484
Just one more piece of historical perspective. If you go down here by where the swimming pool is, there's still a foundation and a hearth and we always thought it was a former farm building of some kind until the grandson of the Papars, who owned the property in the 1920s and the 1930s, came and he provided me with a brochure. It was, our property was called the Maples of Rhinebeck. It was actually joined with the Scholder Farm. It was 100 acres, not 90 and 10, the way it is now. And that building, which you're invited to come over and look at the foundation of, was a dance hall with 10 small bedrooms above it. And that's all in black and white in the brochure. So you paid, you paid one amount to stay in our house, 15 Wall Street, and you paid a lesser amount to stay in one of the 10 bedrooms above the dance hall. So putting your guys' job of planning and perspective, you know, it's funny to look back on like what was there in the roaring twenties, but there was a dance hall, believe it or not. And there's photos, you can, you can see it.
I think I get, I think I submitted
Yeah, okay.
Any questions from the planning board? Anyone in the public have any comment or question? Yes.
Nancy Kelly couldn't be here this evening, but I'm here in the role of deputy town historian. She had, I believe, I have a copy of it, she had drafted a letter dated October 30th to the planning board regarding this application. It appears nobody has received it. Well, it's fairly short. This parcel is included in the Hudson River District, contains a house, cottage, and the garage carriage house. This building was constructed about 1915, is rated as a contributing structure for the district. The nomination form describes it as featuring uncut stone on the first floor, second floor clavbered with six over six double bond windows. Wall Street is a primary entry road to this property. Based on that, we would consider the front of the building to be facing Wall Street. The addition which is proposed is well-designed, except that for a historic building addition, we would expect it to be set back from the front facade instead of extending out further. If this change could be made, it would enhance the historic value of the building.
The only problem with that is there's just no place to set it back to different property lines.
That's what I was hearing
Yeah, yeah, it's just
Here earlier.
We talked about that in the field as what would, you're correct, be normally accepted practice, but in this case, I think keeping it away from the property line is a better solution. They have stepped it back so there is a clear definition of where the original stops and the addition comes on. I think given the circumstances on the ground, they've done the best they can to accommodate that.
Also, Wall Street is a private, it's, Wall Street is actually its driveline.
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys realize that when you look at
Well, I think they do.
The public road is like 400 feet in front of it.
When I said earlier, it wasn't visible from West Market Street, I mean, I do, Wall Street does, it's not, it's not a public road. The people who are going to see this change are the people living and visiting the property.
Michael, quick question.
Yes.
It's the
Who knows, Nancy's, I'll take it.
What's the setback requirement on that property line?
Looking from the side?
Under. Under. So we're still, I mean, they've gotten a variance for that?
We're, we're, our public hearing with this EPA is
Okay.
There's no variance.
And the, I assume the original building is grandfathered in on
Yes. Two foot setback, two foot, three feet.
And Eric, I think that as Jim just pointed out, the only grants required is for the backside, not the front, or the, from the south side. And since the right side is moved in, actually a little closer in than the existing building, it's grandfathered on that, on that backside. So they do need two variances, but that's not needed.
It's within the existing, I didn't realize it was, I thought it was an addition
It's, it's an addition, but they, you see how they moved the black? You see pointing out the existing building.
Yes.
And so that, that has set, that has established the setback line. So that since the blast
So that grandfathered in setback line becomes the official setback line.
Because it's got plenty of room to the south and plenty of room to the west, it makes all the other setbacks.
So in other words, they could have gone all the way back to the back of that.
They could have gone flush with the back of it, yes. That's a good question. We wanted to be able to set up a ladder off of that.
Ah, so you can paint it then.
Two feet is tough for a ladder, you know?
It is.
So that's, that's enough to serve that building and in fact, the day of craft who's building it said, okay, that's, I can do that. So we checked, we brought that to him before we did it. And we're using, there's a very powerful boiler in the carriage house. We're actually going to use that boiler to keep that extra 484 square feet. Other questions from the board? Any members of the public have questions or comments that they'd like to make? Hearing none, I hear I motion to close the public hearing.
Moved.
Second, call in favor?
Hi.
Okay, I have a resolution. The county board of planning board has access follows on the application by Charles Jacob. The site plan approval and special use permit, respective construction addition and associated material authorities during the construction of the carriage house at 11-35 Wall Street. The reaffirmation of the project is type 2 under secret, which according to environmental reviews concluded, based on review of specific information, please inform the planning board members. And the site is a project property, finds the proposed is inconsistent with the objectives stated in check 25. Approval of this application, of these applications will be subject to approval by the zoning board appeals and two variances. Is the public hearing on Wednesday or are they actually?
Public hearing Wednesday.
Okay, and so probably December or whatever is when they would actually then have that. With respect to the application of special use permit to authorize work, we find the proposed work and intended use consistent with general standards of special use permits. We grant the requested special use permit, conditional upon receipt of site plan approval by the planning board. With respect to effect of the site plan approval, we find the proposed work and intended use consistent with town code chapter 125 and include the application, including of the application appears plans by LG Design Inc. and Synergy Design dated 10/3/19. We authorize the planning board chair of stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon applicant satisfaction of the low conditions and the requirements and the ship's components of the adopted resolution. The first are the figures we seek through zoning board appeal and approve of the two area variances requested by the applicant. Submission of the above cited site plan and the foreman numbers specified in the town code chapter 125, except as being modified to a lesser number by the chair in consideration of volume distribution requirements. Any of any outstanding fees or reversible amounts due to town of Rhinebeck. Receive of all approvals, authorizations, or certifications required hearing or from any other town, county, state, or other agencies required in particular of those actions. Fair your motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
Second.
I'll start from here. Eric?
Hi.
No, we don't. I cannot stamp and sign until, yeah, it's a type 2 action, therefore it's, in essence, a condition was included, but I can't stamp and sign the site plan until you get the variances. Eric?
Hi.
Thank you. Edna?
Hi.
Sharon?
Hi.
Melody?
Hi.
Billy?
Hi.
And I wrote I. So thank you very much and also thank you for volunteering. Okay. Next question for the season, Richard Kopaczansky, one track so address the second plan and assistance for the middle commercial bill.
Evening. And we're just here at Hurtec with Richard Kopaczansky, owner of One Chateau Avenue in Reinkliff, home to China Rose Restaurant, right at the, at the West Menage Chateau. Turn and look for a parking space or hand traffic. This, this building actually is, I guess it was the Benson Hotel. Say it's mid 19th century. Mike may have the exact date from antique telling and the records of the historical history. But no exterior changes are actually being proposed to this building. For many years, it has been a commercial establishment, restaurant downstairs. On the upper floor, there is a bedroom on the west side and then the back of the, the upper level was formerly used by the restaurateurs as an office and I guess a little apartment too. I think there was a kitchenette in there. What, what there is proposed there is to leave the apartment as it is at the front building, wrapping the corner, and to take the balance of the space and reconfigure it. There's a demand for small offices in the hamlet of Reinkliff for people that have, you know, businesses and apartments in the city and in concert weekends and they can have a good place to hang out outside where they live. So the proposal was to create these three little solo office spaces with a shared entry area using the existing doors from the upper level parking lot and to renovate the bathroom to make it a accessible space for the, the office tenants. But it's not the kind of office space that people would be in and out of on a regular basis, you know, for conducting business. Really is so somebody has a place to work outside their home here. And Richard has other property in Reinkliff, so there's quite a demand for that and I guess a couple of his other buildings have similar type tenants. But it's actually going to be a less intensive use of the second floor that was there previously when it had, again, a kitchen and was kind of living space and office space for the restaurateur. So that's the second floor. On the first floor, we're not even reconfiguring as much in the space. We're just opening up a wall between the primary and secondary dining areas to make it more visible. And we'd like to make a couple of improvements at the same time. The, the entry has been here where you come in and come down a few steps. The old hotel entry was at the corner and the doors are still there. So the intent is to reopen that as an entrance. And then while we're doing it, we want to create accessible restrooms where they're now or pretty substandard, and an accessible entrance over here, which is pretty easy to do on the existing patio. But that's, we're not adding any spare footages as they were, not changing the footprint. We're simply doing internal renovations to this building, but anything requiring a building permit, of course, in the hamlet of Reinkliff, is subject to site plan review and approval by a planning board. But it's essentially no, no real change of use because the upstairs essentially had an office with an apartment, will continue to be an apartment and smaller offices and then continue to be, we hope, a restaurant again and a retail establishment on the ground floor.
Chinese in that? Could it be possible?
What's that?
Could it be possible to have Chinese or?
It's possible.
Share, what do you, what do you think?
This was a very easy site visit. The parking's up top, right by the door. There's really no change, there's no change to what's there, so it's, no problem.
It's very straightforward. I know we discussed the possibility of extending the sidewalk down on the side. As we're reviewing it, there's a retaining wall, or rather an old retaining wall, and there's a number of pipes on there that involve some part of the septic system for the building, I guess a correction chamber, a pump chamber, pipes and that. We were thinking that it might be at some point down the road, it might be something to maybe talk with the county of Rhinebeck about narrowing Shatzel a wee bit so that you could actually put, you know, an extension of the sidewalk down Shatzel to then rejoin maybe you do have at the restaurant. But at this point, for my view, it's just not feasible without getting more area because you don't want a setback retaining wall. Doesn't, doesn't look all that sharp in the building, I don't think you want a mess with it. But I agree with Sharon, I didn't find anything where it was questionable or undesirable. Other questions or comments from the planning board? Okay, members of the public, anyone who had a comment? Yes.
Some of you will remember, I had several meetings with you last year for a property that begins on Charles Street and extends back towards the river and has a steep slope that comes in behind China, the old China Roads. I don't have any objections to Richard renovating this, in fact, I commend him for doing so. I am here to just ask you to consider the need in Reinkliff, the severe need in Reinkliff for a destination point, preferably a restaurant. We thought we would have it at least in the Reinkliff Hotel, but that appears not to be a consistent situation. And anyway, China Rose was a very active and loved restaurant by many, many people, not just to Rhinebeck, but there were people who came in from across the river, from New Paltz, Gypsy, a lot of people that I met there. Not just to Rhinebeck, but there were people who came in from across the river, from New Paltz, Gypsy, a lot of people that I met there. I have to admit, a frequent customer, both for food and drink at the restaurant. And Rhinebeck really, Reinkliff and Rhinebeck really needs this as a destination point. There is just not, there are very few opportunities for something to be locatable within Reinkliff. And I hope that you consider that in your consideration of Richard's plans as he goes along. In encouraging a restaurant. Yes, it would be great to have another Chinese restaurant. But I don't, I haven't spoken to the two prior people who ran that restaurant. They were well-known in New York City, and they said they had a number of requests over time to see if they could establish a restaurant in Reinkliff. It would be good for Rhinebeck or it would be good for Reinkliff. So I hope you will consider that. There is some construction that needs to be done in that building, renovation. It's, the basic footprint is great. And I hope, wish you luck in getting it back in shape, because it does need a lot of work. But the plan as shown here is valid, and it would be very good for Rhinebeck and Reinkliff. And I would have no objection, since my property, hard to, up here in the very top, goes up that steep slope, you may remember. We had some difficulty with a prior zoning enforcement officer, which you folks very happily remedy. But I would have no objection to his, using that back area, which is mostly lawn, on his property, it shows in the dotted line. There's room for additional, subject if needed. It's an ideal property for a good restaurant for Reinkliff. And we would love to have that kind of work again.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? You're in, yes.
One thing, one further, we discussed it previously, but regarding the offices, you're not proposing a sign to put out there?
Yeah, until it's a tenant, the end of there are no signs of the upper level either. But also, exterior lighting, there is none in the building now, and none is proposed at the current time.
Well, there is, there's two lights at the old entrance to China Rose.
Inside, what, up in the awning?
Yeah, up above, just below the awning.
Okay, because I couldn't see that in your photograph.
There are two lights there.
Okay, I take that back, there are two lights in the awning, it's the old entrance.
Are they existing lights?
Yes. Oh, yeah, they've been there. You can't actually see them unless you look up.
Anything else? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Second, call in favor? All right. The County Department of Land and Forest and Forestry has filed a request for an application by Richard Kobachansky for site plan approval and special use permit. Respectively, convert the second floor of the building offices to One Chateau Avenue. We reaffirm the proposed act as type 2 under seaker, which according to environmental policies included. Based on review of significant information, the uniformment planning board members. On their site list for the project property, finds that the proposed is consistent with objectives stated in chapter 125. With respect to the application of special use permit, finds that proposed work and intended use be consistent with general standards of special use permits set forth in town code chapter 125. Grants to requested special use permit conditional upon receipt of the site plan approved by the planning board. With respect to the application of site plan approval, finds that proposed work and intended use be consistent with town code chapter 125. And approves the application, inclusive of the application materials and plan sheets by Warren Temple Smith dated 9/10/19. B, authorizes the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan, find applicant satisfaction of below conditions and under requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. Submission of the above cited site plan and the form and numbers specified in the town code chapter 125. Anybody have any outstanding fees or reversible amounts due to town of Rhinebeck, including review plus signature of application, subject to this resolution. Receive of all approvals, authorizations, or certifications required hearing, required hearing, or from any other town, county, state, or other agencies required in particular of those actions. Is there a motion to approve? A second? I will call the board, Kathy?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Good luck with the restaurant.
Thank you very much. No restaurant, my buddy, one day.
All right, we have one more public hearing. And it is SS Farm LLC, 211 River Road.
Just talk, okay. I'm here representing SS Farm, application for planning board for a two lot subdivision of a property of creating a 21.940 acre parcel out of around 200 acre lot. Of course, I didn't bring my own plans or anything on that property. The property that is being subdivided has the majority of the improvements on it, including the stone barns. There's stone barns on the south and west side of the driveway. Existing, what was it, creamery at the time. None of these, these buildings, all these games came from the historical records. One is called the bullpen, and one that's called the caretaker's house. The last time I was here, it was questioned about another shed that was on the property from the aerial, but not shown on the map. And I explained to the two site visitors that that was the movable chicken house. And that, so it doesn't stay in one spot, therefore, we don't, we don't look at it. Michael, surely this is no foundation, we don't want to show. Since we were here last, we did have the wetlands flag, and the map has been amended to show the wetlands on the property. The actual wetland itself, these are Armicore Wetlands, not DEC Wetlands, but because of this Rhinebeck, does require the 100-foot adjacent area. The total acreage of what's in the wetland is about a acre and a half. So we do not exceed, we're not hampered by the fact that 75% of the lot has to be hinedrawn. So that didn't, we didn't have to change any of the boundary lines. The pond cottage that you see on the south and the south line, between the pond cottage and the stone barns was approximately just over 300 feet. So we set that line to be 150 feet from each of those buildings, because of the 150-foot side area setback. I have been out and done site work, site distance work for the proposed driveway. We're working on the map and to submit that now to the Dutchess County Department of Public Works. The initial map showed the driveway coming a straight line out along the northerly line. But if you were at the northeast corner of this lot, you wouldn't have enough site distance to the north. So the map that we have here before is more realistically showing the approximate location of the driveway to be determined, to be approved by the Dutchess County Department of Public Works. So that's pretty much it, and I met up here with Michael and Sharon last week.
Yes, Ken?
Well, I did ask Ray before, but I'll ask again for record. He's like, the comp planer does recommend that you use shared driveways, and I was wondering if that was a possibility. The other question was, how close does this new driveway come to the Sycamore Tree on River Road?
Okay, the first question is whether or not they would use a shared driveway. I was, I specifically asked both Steve Mensch, who was originally involved in this project, and also Kane Lucas, who was the representative for Annie Leibowitz, the owner of the property. If they would consider a shared driveway, and they did say that they really do not want to have a shared driveway. That it's not, I guess, from logistics or from, you know. Obviously, if she's decided she wants to sell the other property, it's an encumbrance on that property, and, you know, people might shy away from that, having to share. You know, everybody likes privacy, especially if you have 100, 100 acres or whatever. As far as the Sycamore Tree, I had an email that was sent to Steve Mensch from Dutchess County Department of Public Works. And they specifically noted that the Sycamore Tree would probably have to come down. I'm going to look at it in terms of, the Sycamore Tree would be right in this location, maybe 50 or, actually, if you go out there now, I don't know if they pass it. We did put a stake in the ground where the proposed driveway would be. I don't know if they can count, if you can see beyond the Sycamore Tree on like the other side of it, as that, you know, if it has to be totally open or not. That's the only question, none of it happened, because there were two other trees adjacent to the Sycamore Tree that would also have to come down. And if those two came down, then the Sycamore, you know, there might be enough from the sea behind it. But I don't know, it has to be an open, clear distance, or, you know, that's something I could ask the highway department. Yeah, no, I think if you're out there, you look at it, pavement is actually worked around the Sycamore Tree. And they did, you know, probably, in terms of safety, maybe the Sycamore Tree probably should have come down before anyway. I know, I understand.
It's always fun, isn't it?
Yeah.
I would pretty much, it seems very straightforward, and I didn't see any issues with it at all. The only thing we will have in the approval resolution, if I can stamp and sign, is just, you know, sign off in Dutchess County where the curb cut is. Not putting in the driveway, but just put, do the curb cut.
And that's my thought, too, is they may not put this driveway in for who knows how long.
Right.
But they want to have the ability to do that, I'm sure.
So other than that, any other questions or comments from members of the planning board? Any comments, questions for the public?
Me, yeah.
Mike Rager, Deputy Town Historian, and I'm here on behalf of, I'm speaking for Nancy Kelly, our town historian. And again, I will share this letter with you, I don't know if you've received it, dated November 1st. This application covers buildings designed by Harry Lindenberg for Vincent Astor. It includes a complex of stone structures, such as the main barn, a creamery with heating facility, bull barn, silo, and caretaker's cottage. After Vincent gave the property for the Marion Rue Mansion to his sister Alice, this became the north end of the Fern Cliff Estate. The property has been thoughtfully divided to include all of the buildings designed by Lindenberg. And extends to River Road, a bit more than the 20 acres that are required by the relevant town zoning ordinance. These buildings are included on the National Historic Register Hudson River Landmark District as contributing structures. And are considered very significant because of the architect, and as part of Vincent Astor's Fern Cliff Estate. Stone for the barn complex, excuse me, came from the adjacent pond. One corner of the pond shows at the lower left of the subdivision map. Some 300 drawings of Lindenberg's design for the barn complex were donated to the Rhinebeck Historical Society and are now available. They're all online at rhinebeckhistory.org. The property has been known as Clifton Point since Annie Leibowitz acquired the property. It is named for extension of land into the Hudson, which is nearby. Our position is that the application should be approved.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Second, call in favor? Very good. All right. County Department of Land and Forest and Forestry has filed a request by SS Farm LLC for minor subdivision of wetlands. We reaffirm the power of classification as type 2 under seaker. Based upon review of significant information, the uniformment planning board members. On their site list for the project property, finds that the proposed is consistent with objectives stated in chapter 101 subdivision of land. With respect to the application of the wetlands firm to authorize work, finds the proposed work and intended use be consistent with the plans of wetland permits set forth in town code chapter 120. Grants to requested wetlands firm conditional upon receipt of minor subdivisions ruled by the planning board. With respect to the minor subdivision, finds the proposed act is consistent with town code chapter 101. We approve the application inclusive of the minor subdivision planned prepared by Ralph Surveying, dated 9/17/19, revised to 10/31/19. We authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan, find applicant satisfaction of below conditions and requirements within 180 calendar days of the adoption of the resolution. Stamp of the resolution, temp of the subdivision final plan is non-jurisdictional subdivision for private facilities only by Dutchess County Department of Health. Approval of a curb cut by Dutchess County Department of Transportation onto River Road for the subdivision. Submission of the above cited site plan and the form and numbers specified in the town code chapter 101. Submission of the deeds to be filed with Dutchess County Clerk's Office and deliver any outstanding fees and or reversible amounts due to town of Rhinebeck related review and processing of the application, subject to this resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
Aye.
Second?
Second.
Call the board, Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Kathy? Woody?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Okay, you said submission of deeds. I thought submission of deeds only came when we were doing a lot line alteration as opposed to a subdivision.
Well, you're creating a new.
Right, but she may not sell it.
No, she may not sell it, it's being created.
You just want the meets and bounce description?
Yeah, we need, yeah.
Okay, it's typically only been when I've done a lot line change where I've had to submit a copy of the deed. Because, I mean, she might not sell it for 15 years.
Oh, no, the one question that I'm not sure about, so she may well not sell it, is whether or not the affordable housing and recreation fees go by. And I don't know, since she's not paying.
Well, no, I think, I thought you, well, I don't know anything about the affordable housing fees. The recreation fee, I believe, does apply, well, except she has a residence on, so there is a residence at the caretaker's house on the other lot. So she's not, she, you know, the any potential impact has already been there.
Let us see, I don't know.
Okay, well, you'll have to let us know.
I'm gonna have to find out, yeah, I'm gonna have to find out. And I'll find out through the, that will be reversible things in the next month or two. So I will, I will look into that, because I agree it's. Thanks, Melody.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. We have our presentations for procedural resolutions of Harry Stout, on 39 Monceymurray Street, site plan special for a simple family dwelling on town and village property.
Good evening. Excuse me? It's up to you, is it?
Give me the presentation, tell me whatever order you wish to.
Well, I guess I'm looking to build a house on a parcel that's slightly complex, due to the fact that it's both town and. Submitting plans and maps and so forth. How can I help?
Okay, do you have anything here, allegations of what you want to build, and is that so?
I submitted everything, Gretchen.
Do you want to describe exactly where did you want to go?
I'm gonna build it to, it's a three-bedroom house. It's based on a barn-like structure. It's got, there's a large open space, as you can see from the windows, in this area here, this is a large open space in the middle of the house. This is a bedroom, this is kitchen, this is actually, what, the stairs? This is the stairs, it's called a stair tower, on the second floor. It's about nearly goes about, so it's one bedroom there, one bedroom there, and one bedroom there.
So they're three bedrooms?
Correct.
Can we, I guess, one thing that might be helpful, if we go back to the map of the site, just so you could show the issue that we're facing, is where the village and town line is.
Yeah, yeah, this is a, I suppose, an unusual situation, I think you guys have identified here. This is the municipal line, it's not a lot line. And it kind of bisects the house.
And what do you look at, are these wetlands, if you just sort of point them out?
Yep, absolutely. Let's see, what do we have here? I believe this indicates the wetland line. This is the 100-foot setback. It's a relatively large parcel, not necessarily for the zoning for what it is, it's a pre-existing lot. But there's a very, very small area here that's buildable. You can see the septic here. You can see the septic here. We have, we're in our second round with Mr. David Pearson's topic conversation earlier. I was hoping to have some comments from him prior to this meeting, he was not able to get to that.
And you're going to use municipal water for a well?
That's a good question. I think it's gonna depend on, A, whether we're required to use municipal water, and B, if not, if we might prefer to drill a well. So that is, we did indicate the well with the area around it, but I'm not, I think that that, again, how y'all end up interacting with the village, but this is definitively on the village's side. So I think that ultimately they will determine whether or not that's permissible. And I'm not, to be honest with you, I'm not a hundred percent convinced which one be my favorite.
Questions from members of the planning board?
What do we have to do with the village?
Well, the village has to approve their half of the building, the town has to approve our half of the building. I then guess the building inspector for the town and the village have to go on joint site visits, see...
Well, unless there's an agreement, I mean, they have been talking between...
They might be able to look something up, but basically, we're responsible for the town's side and they're responsible for the village's side, so all regulations in the town zoning law apply to the town's side, and all the regulations for the village zoning law apply to the village's side.
It's my understanding that the village requires you to use municipal water. That's my understanding, I might get it wrong. And there's a caveat with that, that says you can build, drill a well, but you still have to pay a minimum fee for their municipal water.
In that case, it probably, in that case, probably makes sense to hook up with municipal water. Depends on, yeah.
Well, you might want to talk to people about the quality of your water.
Well, that is actually my concern.
There's some concerns, you know?
Under, yeah.
Other, other comments or questions? Okay, Jane?
So, and I correct, just to clarify, that in the town, on the town side of the city, the only work that's being done is the house. So what we're seeing is the shaded area, houses, the well is technically on the village's side, your septic will be over here, all the pavement in the village's side of the parcels, and the part that we're really concerned with is the house construction.
That's correct, and for...
And the driveways in this darker shaded area here in the village is also on the village.
The vast majority of movements are on the village's side. You know, for the record, when we looked at the elevations, this here was where those windows were, so this is kind of a large open living room area, this is a fraction of the bedroom here, and this is an entryway, and there is a conversation about the libraries and bedrooms, but there is a library and an office here with an entry hallway between them.
How big of a piece of property is this?
Overall, I think it's just shy of four acres. It goes, it's, again, the vast majority is wetland. We particularly love it because, given that it is that amount of our property is wetland, but then there's hundreds of acres of under, forever, kind of almost forever wild land behind it. It's a parcel that I think was, to a very large extent, deemed, it's kind of a throwaway parcel, actually. And I've, in my life spent, you know, I've developed a number of different properties that were unusual. This one struck me as such, I think we can make it really very beautiful, and I think it'd become an asset to the town and the village.
Quick things, I noticed on your ag data statement, that this was a subdivision of the parcel, but that's not...
Oh, that might be, I'm sorry, you know, because we have been at this for a year so far. Originally, we did intend, so, here's what happened, actually, originally we intended to build on the town's side. So we were in front of the planning board a year ago, and then not until, and actually had met with the E C, and they were verbally gonna grant us a variance to come over the adjacent area, because there was no other option in the town parcel within which to build. It was only revealed through their investigation that, in fact, this was not two parcels. I heard in an earlier conversation, somebody was talking about what was represented, you know, so this was represented as two parcels originally. So it came to our attention through the Department of Environmental Conservation, at which time they said, no longer applies, you have to push the house back because it's one parcel, not two, so get out of our area, and therefore, we moved it over.
Yeah, if you can just submit revised ag...
Yes.
So it doesn't say that for, to lack any, you know, so there won't be any confusion in the future if someone looks and finds...
Absolutely, good.
And then my only other remaining question is, there's a silk fence detail shown on here, so if you're...
No fence.
Silk fence.
Silk fence.
Which will help deal with erosion and constructions going on, but I couldn't tell on here where that is. Do you know where the silk fence?
It says silk fence, and it's not on the map?
Well, no, you have, you have a silk fence detail showing.
I see, okay.
I couldn't tell on there where it's gonna go, and my concern is just, if someone's in the future, your contractor or whoever else, they need to know where that silk fence needs to go, I couldn't find it.
Yes.
So we might want to just call that out.
Yeah, I can go out, that's, looks like, I will have to verify that with the end.
If you could do that.
Yeah, absolutely, you want that clearly delineated, absolutely, understood.
Anything else, screen one? Okay, I have a resolution here. County Board of Planning Board, here we have just follows an application by Henry Scott, site plan approval, and Town Code Chapter one two five, specific for simple town withdrawal on twenty three nine Moncemary Street. The application supporting documents is added for initiating the U.S. planning board advisory and public. The past prime year, both actions have been received, which coordinate environmental priority of the village. You're gonna schedule a public hearing on the application for...
December sixteenth at six thirty five.
And direct to script, under paper, otherwise cause no notices, posting there are important sort of requirements set forth in the Town Code Chapter one two five, and property direction by the janitor, about the notices. I'll send you a... Okay, who would like to go for a visit? Don't all speak up once.
I'll bring coffee.
Okay, we'll get in touch with you about the site visit. In accordance with Town Code Chapter nine, the Conservation Advisory Board, we refer the application to the C A V, where you were written comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with Town, Chapter one eighteen, water under consistency review, a little bit of property, some... I know, it says something like that. Water under consistent review, refer the application with the water under consistency advisory committee for review of environment. In accordance with Dutchess County government planning developments, three, two, three nine planning zoning referral, the first application of the Dutchess County government planning and development review. Authorizes without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited site visits and referrals. Preparation with working graph, with an approval reservation with the town board's consideration on December sixteenth, or as maybe later time. But I very motion to approve. Second, all in favor? Do you want to get in touch with those guys about the site visit, and Gretchen about the notices?
Yes, and forgive me. The ag data discrepancy was what?
I just think you were doing a subdivision?
Not a subdivision, yeah.
Yeah, just take that off there, so we're not confusing.
Okay. The next thing we have here is from Carolyn Scott and Rod Mett, site plan special use permit, ground mounted solar.
Hello, my name is Leah Snastud, I work as a project manager for Suncom, and I'm here representing the company, Our Core, and Carolyn Scott and Rodna, who are the property owners at one twenty five Hortonburg Road. This proposed project is a twenty six point six kilowatt ground mount solar array that is, consists of seventy six three hundred fifty watt solar panels, four hundred three rays stacked in portrait orientation, two high, rather than three rays. The array's little square footage is one thousand ninety, one thousand one hundred and ninety eight square feet, and the array needs all setback requirements for the R C five zoning district. This array will be situated roughly in the center of the thirty five point five nine meter lot located at one twenty five Hortonburg. The array will be surrounded by dense wood growth, that's a mix of hardwood and deciduous trees. The total setbacks, the total setbacks from the front property line will be six hundred fifty one feet, from the south property line will be three hundred seventy three feet, from the north property line, four hundred forty nine feet, from the rear property line will be one thousand sixteen feet. So this array is literally in the middle of the woods, and will not be visible from Hortonburg Road, nor any of the adjacent property lines. So we have to ask, answer any questions anyone has?
Yeah, I have a question. Basically, what we require for this is if there's a site plan under article seven of our zoning law, showing the whole property, showing the different characteristics, because there are three wetlands on this property, and from what you presented here, I can't tell whether any of the construction here is either within one of the wetlands or within the one hundred foot buffer of the land. We require a site plan showing, a lot of it showing future certain wetlands, streams, if there are any, flood zones if there are, anything on that, and we don't have that. So based on this, I don't know that some of this stuff is even stuck in the middle of a wetland, which of course can't be, and a wetland permit may be necessary because within a buffer area, especially, and also for the house, and any other construction on the side of the property.
Of course, I especially did notice that that detail is missing, and the closest wetland is federal wetland about two hundred feet to the east of the array. We would need the one hundred foot setback, and I can get that drawing, I mean, added to the drawing.
We need that.
Yeah, absolutely, no problem, I can get that for you at the next meeting, or before.
sooner, so that when the site visits us first, they'll actually know what they're looking at.
Sure, when do you need it by?
Well, neither the site visit, so, you know, as we move forward, two members will be appointed to do the site visit, and as far as I'm concerned, the building itself, the relative performance is going to be conducted as soon as it can happen to be that, by the time. But the C A D may need one, the public may need one, so probably, if you could get one here this week, that would be a good idea to have on the file.
Sure.
Because all this is public information, and the public really needs to have the opportunity to come and do it.
Sure, I can get that to you by any any week.
That would be good. I'm here to get you. Other questions from members of the planning board?
This sort of looks like a particularly large array, is this a particularly large house, or is...
Soon as square feet of your house?
Approximately four thousand square feet of building space in the house.
Um, approximately four thousand square feet for the house?
That is of interest, I happen to have. Solar at home is twenty four panels, tracker pole, serves a four thousand square foot house and a twenty four by twenty four barn.
Yeah, so, my city regulations put a cap at one hundred and ten percent offset production from solar arrays, so this will not exceed one hundred and ten percent of their production, probably a little bit lower, actually.
So you're gonna be using a lot of electricity, basically, at this place, once it's built?
Uh, yeah.
Any unusual use that you're planning?
We have a geothermal heating system, and it's electric and toxic. So heating and cooling is geothermal.
And it's also, it's also two electric vehicles, one...
Yeah, so they have a geothermal unit that consumes a lot of electricity in two electric car charging plus, so...
How many panels altogether is this?
Seventy six.
Seventy six.
Any other questions at the moment?
When I, on the code, the total square footage area of the, let me try to get this right, the panels cannot exceed the square footage of the actual house, like, it's four thousand square foot house, obviously depending on the number of stories, and that just, we need to make sure that those numbers are shown to calculate, then on the house that sits, or is shown on here is approximate location, not the scale, you just need to make sure that the square footage of these panels, I'm sure it won't be, isn't more than the square footage footprint on the property itself.
Yeah, I can get that calculation added to the drawing.
Yes, we have that in the drawing.
Anything else? Okay, I have a resolution. County Board of Planning Board, here we have just follows an application by Carol Scott and Rodna, for a site plan approval and special use permit on the Town Code Chapter one two five, respectively, for the repack, to authorize the installation of ground mount solar array, one two five, in River Road. To accept the application supporting documents is active for initiating U.S. planning board advisory and public, request a technical draft, and establish the legal access to the board environment, when you need to include. We schedule a public hearing for...
December sixteenth at six forty.
Six forty. And direct to put under paper, otherwise cause no notices, posting the eleven courts with the requirements set forth in the Town Code Chapter one two five. Do you gather your planning board members?
I will go.
I will go. And, you know, but we have such experience with several installations to do the public, to do the site visit, and we will get in touch with you about scheduling, especially in the near term. In accordance with Town Code Chapter nine, Conservation Advisory Board, we refer the application to Conservation Advisory Board for due comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with Dutchess County government planning development, two three nine, refer the application to Dutchess County government planning and development review, authorize without prejudice to any information or comment that may be related to public hearing and may arise based on both the above cited field visit and referrals. Preparation with working graph and approvals resolution for the planning board on December sixteenth, or as maybe later time. Could I hear motion to approve? Second, call in favor? Very good. We will be getting in touch with you, you'll want to get in touch with, you'd like the notices, yeah, having, having...
Send you an email, yes. Okay, great, thanks.
We have one more item, grassmere. What we're doing tonight is actually, in essence, reissuing the existing approvals which expire on December eighteenth. So in essence, since we have nothing else in our zoning law covering this, this is an application, another application that is actually to approve. I think that we're, what I would like to recommend is that we already have all the documents, nothing is changing when it's currently approved, but it expires on December eighteenth. But we have to go through the process of presenting an application, accepting the application, having the public hearing, and referrals, because it's basically reissuing, we've run out of expand, extension times. A public hearing will be on December sixteenth, assuming everything is fine, and it should be, because nothing has changed, we would be in a position then to approve the old approvals. Now, this is not to be confused, which we will be confused, with the new approvals, as you know, they have a new site plan, a new, new...
Fakes.
Fakes, thank you. And that is going to be handled separately from this on December second, they have to present to us what their new plan is, but in the interim, they would like to maintain approval of the existing plan, just to make sure they still have an approval in place. I hope, I hope that makes sense.
So this is just a formal...
Yes, but we have to go through it as a, as a basically reapproval, because we've run out of, they've run out of time extensions under our current zoning law, the special ...
When you say go through, like, really go through the whole thing again?
No, we're not gonna do that, because it's gonna be Christmas, and we don't do that. So what we're gonna do is say, we're basically gonna affirm that we are going to use all the submitted materials already, they had to pay fees again, of course, because this is a reissuance, but we have to have the public hearings, we do that for all, all applications, and we should be able to wrap this up on the subject.
Michael, what about notification, you know, during...
They have to be notified, we have notifications, we have a lot of this. The main reason for this is to ensure that if anyone objects or gets upset, they can't object legally and try to challenge the reasons. So that's, that's basically where we are.
Can we just sign as well, assign the property?
Yeah, the property, yes. Have you been through this before?
Probably still haven't seen it.
Is this, is this the way we should get it, or...
I've covered it together, so it just started. You've done a lot of reading, Ken.
Yeah, I have. I'm gonna have Kim read this to make sure that we've covered it.
Is he as fast as you?
Possibly, we'll find out, I guess, all right. I cobbled together resolutions as I drafted them. Okay, so, resolution is a procedural resolution. Town of Runbeck Planning Board hereby acts in applications by Menchis Grassmere LLC for reissuance of approvals for special use permit and site plan review and approval in Town Code Chapter one two five, zoning sections one two five, six eight, and then to authorize construction of a country in two, located at twenty nine Mill Road in the rural agriculture zoning districts, as depicted or otherwise described in applications for special use permit, site plan review and approval enumerated in the approval resolutions of October fifth twenty fifteen and August seventeenth twenty fifteen, and reissuance approval resolution in June eighteenth twenty eighteen. in applications for special use permit, site plan review and approval enumerated in the approval resolutions of October 5th, 2015, and August 17th, 2015, and reissuance approval resolution in June 18th, 2018. We accept the application supporting documents as adequate for initiating review by the planning board's advisors and public. We accept the prior classification of the proposed actions as type 1 under seeker. Overall, development plan has been previously subject of the planning board's resolutions issuing a statement of findings under seeker on March 3, 2014, including related issuance of a statement of consistency with the posted policies on August 7, 2014, both of which the planning board reconfirms at this time. Schedule the public hearing on the application for...
Summer 16th at 6:45.
And direct to court, undertaker, otherwise cause and noticing, and posting thereof, in accordance with department set forth within the, under town code chapter 125, section 12572. In accordance with town code chapter 9, conservation advisory board, refers the application to conservation advisory board for review and comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with town code chapter 118, waterfront consistency review, refers the application to waterfront advisory committee for review and comment concerning consistency of the RP. In accordance with Dutchess County planning... Do you want me to resubmit this to Dutchess County? Because it's a site plan, technically.
I'll let Sheldon, but...
I'll pull it in there.
I'll put a call in.
Yeah, okay. In accordance with Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, 239, planning zoning referral, refers the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for review. Authorizes without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or arise based on both the above cited field visit, referral, preparation of working draft of an approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on the December 16th, or as maybe later timeline.
I think we're gonna probably have a quick, we need to get another site visit, so we will just assume the site visit is, because we're just, we're reconfirming everything. Could our motion to approve?
Move.
Second, all in favor? Very good.
Thank you, thank you.
Hope the stars align, and this works on the 16th.
Yes.
And we'll see you guys on the 2nd.
On the 2nd, yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone, or anything? Kathy's giving me the evil eye. What do you?
Make a motion to re-grant.
All in favor?